Good afternoon, everyone. I'll just give a few more minutes for planning board members to sign on. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I'd like to welcome participants to the virtual planning board meeting of March 28th. And I'd like to take a call to order and take a roll call vote on planning board members. Ms. Creighton?
Here.
Ms. Delicio?
Yeah.
Ms. Foley?
Here.
Mr. Gilbert?
Here.
Mr. Alme? And Ms. Tenny?
Sure.
Thank you all. Looks like we have a full quorum tonight. I'd like to remind all board members, guests to ask to be recognized by the chair if they wish to speak. This meeting is being recorded. And first on the agenda is an acknowledgement of receipt of correspondence. Three letters from Lorraine Iavoni and two from the Essex zoning board of appeals. Sharon, did we get anything else since the posting of the agenda?
No.
Okay.
Ron, this is Mary. May I ask a question? So none of those correspondence were in the folder. Can you tell me what the Essex zoning ones were?
Sharon?
Sure. It was about two public hearing notifications. One was the zoning board, both with the zoning board of appeals for Redbonn Architecture for Variance for the town of Essex for Six to six fifteen six packing requirements to add to sixteen Main Street. And the second one was a change of use for 143 Main Street.
Thank you.
Sharon, can we get those in our meeting packets in the future?
Sure.
At this time, allow any public comments on items that are not on the agenda? Anyone want to speak from the public?
Ron, can I jump in? We actually received an email from Helen Baffo a few minutes ago, correct?
Well, I wasn't, I didn't look at my email a few minutes.
I understand, I understand. I understand.
Well, it was addressed, it was addressed to Steve Gang, and I don't think it went to all the board members. So I was curious as to whether that needs to be, I can, I can put it in the packet.
Well, I guess my question is, is the planning board notifying the Concom Essex and if those notices then could also be put in the folder so we don't have to ask that question?
Yes, I sent out the notices if there's a public hearing.
I think just a copy in our folder so we see them and don't have to ask you for them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, without any more comments, I'd like to start on the A and R for six Greenby Road. We continue from March fourteenth. Mr. Copeland?
Yes, sir. How are you? I'd like to introduce to everyone Matt McGee. He represents Hancock Surveyors and he can probably best answer any questions anyone may have.
Let me put this on the screen.
Hello. Mr. Copeland said you had questions about the amount of impervious area on the lot at the last meeting. Someone required about it?
Okay, so. Yes, Christine, did you have a question? We were asking for that.
And I saw our zoning bylaw talks about how much impervious surfaces can be allowed on a lot. And this particular lot also falls into a water protection zone. And that actually reduces the amount of impervious surfaces that are allowed on that lot. So I was asking for that to be noted. And in my understanding is that with A and R, it would leave you with not enough impervious to be illegal.
So what there is.
I have a meeting tonight, so I'm on right now. So I'll call you tomorrow.
Roughly thirty-one hundred square feet of impervious area on this, on this lot one C. Okay. So Mr. Copeland and I went and spoke with Paul Orlando about our different options for this. And one of the things that came up was potentially replacing the existing paved driveway with some sort of pervious material or favors or something of that nature. And we thought that was acceptable.
Anybody else, excuse me, Ron, is anybody else having trouble hearing?
Very much so.
It's a little muffled.
Yeah, Ms. McGee, maybe you can change your microphone or sit closer or further away. Just try that again, please. Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
It's, it's not exactly clear, but we can, I can hear you, yes.
So Mr. Copeland and I met with Paul Orlando last week just to get his opinions on how, how we could address this. And we discussed replacing the existing paved driveway with pervious material such as favors. And we thought that was acceptable. I don't know if that's all you need or that would.
What we asked for last time was calculations. That would, what we asked for last time was calculations to show that doing such a thing would comply with.
So right now it's at thirty-one hundred square feet impervious area. And the driveway itself is at thirteen hundred square feet. So if, if that existing driveway was replaced with a pervious material, now we get it under the twenty-five hundred square feet.
Okay. Gary Gilbert?
Well, I just want to say what I've stated before that we don't need to pursue any questioning about how much pervious they have or impervious they have. If they've created a zoning problem for themselves, so be it. That's, that's their right to modify their property boundaries. I've recommended to the board that we endorse the A and R as submitted. And it's not our, it's not our job to be pursuing or scrutinizing it on other levels. So I'd be happy to make a motion that we endorse the A and R, Ron.
Okay, a motion has been made to endorse the A and R. Is there a second?
With all due respect, this is Gary's opinion, and I followed up and asked for town council's opinion on this in legal writing. So as much as Gary's opinion is here, I, it doesn't mean much to me at this point. The bylaws, what we have in front of us is what I'm reading versus Gary's opinion.
I'll second the motion to get it on the table.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, and now we'll have discussion. So Christine, you're questioning whether the impervious is part of the, should be part of the A and R calculations.
I do, I do. I think our bylaws actually line out restrictions and they go into A and R restrictions. And I don't think it's too much to ask where we have these water zones for a purpose and a reason. And I think public safety is more is, comes ahead of what Gary Gilbert's opinion is at this point.
Ron, I'll just say, you know, I don't want to go back and forth in this, but I've, I've had many, many years of reviewing A and Rs on the planning board previously and now, and Christine's completely incorrect. We, we should endorse this A and R. We're not here to scrutinize based on current zoning bylaws. That's not part of the A and R approval process legally. You're completely incorrect. So I'll just encourage the people vote on the motion.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Ron, yes.
Yes.
I asked for legal follow-up. Don't know what, why we are relying on a board member that is not an attorney when we have town council at our disposal. If all these years of experience prove so, we would have some kind of document to back up on this. We don't. Therefore, that's what town council should be used for.
Any further discussion, Sarah?
Um, if these dwellings or these buildings were not on Lot One C, we would endorse this plan. And so I believe that the A and R statute requires that we look only at whether the lot area is sufficient for the zone and whether the frontage is sufficient as required by zoning. I think that the pervious impervious situation is worth considering, but I believe it's the domain of the building inspector. So I would vote yes.
Mary Foley?
Thanks, Ron. I would. There's, there seems, there does seem to be opinions and guessing on things, and I think it would merit town council to, for us to ask that question. I don't see why not.
Any further discussion on the board? We have two members wanting to send this to town council, two that don't, and any further discussion?
Ron, I've got a little bit I can say about this. I, I believe that Mr. Gilbert is correct. However, I think it's important that we point out to the proponent that he may be creating an illegal lot. And I think that's, I don't think that's something to ignore. I think it's something we point out, but I don't think it's a reason for us not to endorse the A and R. And I think we've done that now, and he can proceed with his realignment of the lots at his own peril. It's not for us to tell him whether or not he can do it. I think we do have an obligation to inform him of what may result, but that's not a controlling thing for us.
Any further discussion? Okay, I'll take a motion.
Ron, I have my hand up.
I'm sorry, Laura Tenny, sorry, sorry.
That's okay. Thanks. I, I have not reviewed a great number of A and Rs being fairly new to the planning board. And I wonder if we would ever make an endorsement that's qualified or conditioned upon the building, where there's a question upon the building inspector's review. And it sounds like it's happened formally. And his advice or satisfying, you know, any condition that he created. Does that make, is that possible? Just putting the question out there.
Can I read that?
Applies for a building.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. I'm looking at the A and R handbook, and it says that there are three criteria. The lots must front in one of three types of ways specified in the law. Lots on such a planned must meet minimum frontage in the planning board's determination that vital access to such lot is contemplated. So that's that's the requirements as well as the area for A and Rs. They're, they're by right division of land. So I agree with Chris that, you know, the applicant, and I, and I guess, you know, maybe looking forward, does the building inspector have enough tools at his disposal to enforce the impervious pervious surface question is a, is an open question in my mind, but that is not what's before us.
Well, I think we ought to pay attention to section four point nine five one, which talks about prohibited uses in these overlay districts, and A and Rs are one of them. So I mean, this particular property does not meet, it does connect to a sewer. So I think there is a question whether this is allowed in Zone Three, which lies in. And I don't understand why we wouldn't ask town council for an opinion. It clearly talks about prohibited uses in these zones, lays out an A and R.
Further discussion? I'll take a roll call vote on whether to approve the A and R.
Ron, it's endorse the A and R. We don't approve.
Endorse the A and R and could we, I'm sorry. We have the A and R number? And could somebody make a motion to endorse the A and R?
I'll make a motion to endorse the A and R number to follow the plan of land dated January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two. Scale, oh, sorry, twenty-twenty, excuse me, January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. A scale of one inch equals twenty feet.
For a second.
We need a A and R number if we have.
Yeah, you know, our number, Sharon, you have an A and R number for this?
While she's looking for that, I'll amend the motion to say six Greenby Road and one fourteen and one sixteen Pleasant Street, Manchester, Rethcy.
Is it six or eight?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
The plan says six.
It is six.
Okay, all right.
We need a second, Ron.
Is there a second?
I seconded.
Okay, and Sharon, did you have an A and R number?
Eight twenty-seven.
So the motion would be eight for A and R, number eight twenty-seven amended. Motion's been made and seconded. I'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Creighton?
Yes.
Ms. Delicio?
No.
Ms. Foley?
I'm going to say due to some outstanding questions that we do not fully have the answers to, I'm going to abstain.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Alme?
Yes.
Ms. Tenny?
I abstain.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, the next item we have is the curb cut at Nine Harold Street. I think four of us went out there last week to take a look at it. And Mr. Bruker, are you?
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry, I don't, but are we finished? Am I finished?
Yeah, you're done.
Oh, we're done?
Listen, if you want to continue, you can listen.
Ron, perhaps you could tell him what the next steps are where he picks up his sign.
All I need, yeah. Are we finished? Did it pass?
Yes.
Okay, everyone, thank you very much.
So get, get in touch with Sharon George about the next steps.
I will, I will. Thank you very much for your time, everyone.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Bruker, would you have any additional comments from our site visit?
Yes, thank you, Chairman, Mr. Giacomo.
Yes.
I would like to, for the, for the few people who were not at the site visit, I would like to reiterate some of our points. And the owners of the property, Tom and Lisa Chafe sent, sent over a number of points that they'd like to make. And, and I can address that. That was sent over yesterday, I believe, per email.
Yes, I distributed that to the board.
Great. Okay, if we could start, I'll do a brief synopsis of where we are on the site. You've all had in the application package, there was a survey in that package. And I'd like to just say a few things about that particular drawing. That is the site plan. There's, if you could go one more plan down, I think it is to find the survey. Maybe it's up. There we go. Perfect. Thank you. If you could zoom out a little bit, one of our main points is the fact that the lot is quite long and the house sits very much at the front of that lot. And that is what sets up this difficult way of putting in a curb cut and also access to the proposed garage that we have there. As you know, it's a currently, it's, it was built as a, with one small car garage and the Chase would like to put a two-car garage building there, also still fairly small. It's limited in terms of depth. And that means that essentially the only way to propose a two-car garage is that it faces the street. Which then really sets up a difficult situation in terms of the narrowness between the new proposed front of the garage and the street itself. That's why we think that the double curb cut is the best solution in this, in this condition. If you could, if you could now go to the other site plan, please. The, the one we were at before, so down, please. Yeah. Here, that plan illustrates the, the proposed garage that you see in the darker shaded area. And right where the cursor is in front of that, that would be the second curb cut and driveway right there. Correct. Thank you. And while we were at the site meeting there, we do believe that that itself, we, we painted out the lines for the proposed driveway in that area to be sixteen feet wide. The current curb cut to the south of that is, is currently around, I believe it's close to twenty-four. In this plan, we're down to sixteen feet. We think that's very reasonable, but if the board would prefer, we could make that a little smaller. So the purpose again is to, to allow for a car to not only come in on the site right where that cursor is. Guests could park in the small parking spot right there and then, and then could leave using, using that driveway back out that way, exactly. And that makes it so that any guest or delivery drivers or that sort of thing could easily go across the site and be nose-first again onto the street. Lisa and Tom, with their cars, they would use that second, the new curb cut, if you will, and that would allow them to pull straight into the drive, into the garage. And then when leaving, they could do a three-point turn either way. Most likely, they would do a three-point turn back to the south and then exit again the same way they came in. We thought long and hard about some of the things that, that were discussed on this, the site visit and and so a number of points were made and, and Tom and Lisa would like to bring those to the fore. I'd like to run through those points and Tom or Lisa may, may jump in as well, if you don't mind. So in that particular narrative, we discuss essentially four main points, and then number four has a few sub-points on it. The proposal is really for a modest-sized driveway, and that's what we're allowed to put there, and everything is within impervious coverage maximums. And it is all, it all conforms to driveway setbacks and so on from the side yard as well. So I went through essentially point number one, the lot and how So I went through essentially point number one, the lot and house configuration. I essentially just talked about that and how the, the current house situation sets up somewhat of a hardship there that makes, makes it difficult to really make a comfortable driveway from a single curb cut point of view. In addition to that, there, some of our points are that it, it's gonna be the simplest way to get on, simplest and safest, to get onto and from Harold Street. Second point, the better view and safety. The chafes are removing all their fences. There may be a small picket-type fence there or, or a short stone wall, but that'll give tremendously more visibility for both pedestrians or traffic on the street and the chafes themselves. And we think really one of the key points to, to this scenario is that the double curb cut will, will allow us to always point forward and be car nose-first onto the street. That I think is a critical point where that is, that is the, the biggest safety point, we believe, that is strongest here. Then we get to point number three, the existing curb cut conditions on the street. There are several other double curb cuts on the street. In fact, if you were to go a little further on Harold Street towards Forest, there's a very similar situation where the house is also pulled forward quite a bit and their access to the garages from the side because they have more width to their lot. But they have a very similar situation where they have one small curb cut and then one that functions a little bit more on the daily basis. And we feel that that is a very safe condition. When, when you drive by, it is clearly visible. It, it's, we cannot see any safety concerns with that kind of setup. The other thing that this does, it, this double curb cut is allows us to park more cars on the driveway rather than if there'd be a single one, there'd be virtually no room to park additional cars. So this way, there would be a sort of a one-way traffic, if you will. If, if there was a party or multiple cars would be parked there. This I'm just going through the last few points on here, on this one. Not, we don't know of, or the chafes don't know of any reported accidents or injuries that have happened in the 13 years that they've lived there on specifically double curb cuts. And, and that's an important fact, we believe, that has a lot to do with our, our fourth point, which is there are a number of curb cuts in the area and so, and they don't necessarily present any, any additional safety concerns that we know of. And the point is that if, if other people were allowed to have double curb cuts, why should that be restricted to the chafes? Now to the next page, our more site-specific points. I'll read that verbatim. In addition to the points listed above, we believe that the argument that double curb cuts may increase possible unsafe traffic and pedestrian interactions. That is not applicable to our condition for these points. First of all, double curb cuts are typically more prevalent in suburban residential neighborhoods, whereas generally more space. Our lot is in a neighborhood that feels very much like such neighborhoods than perhaps other districts in town. And so we believe that this setup will essentially prevent anyone from backing up onto the street, which we believe is more dangerous because you do not have eye contact with the other pedestrians or drivers. And of course, visibility is, is constrained that way. Next point, since the number of cars and drivers from our lot will remain the same, there will be no increase in traffic and our street is a quiet side road with good lot spacing. Second, third point, there are no real hidden corners that might obscure traffic. Especially now that that fence is, is going down, you actually have quite a good view both ways and that's both for people on the road as well as the chaff family. We believe that we've satisfied the zoning bylaws as it relates to backing onto public ways and that, that again, we feel is one of the strongest points. And lastly, the chafes met with their neighbors and there have been no objections raised to this at all. And, and of course, we'd like the board to think hard about our reasoning and we do appreciate your time. That's some, that's sort of in a nutshell what this says, maybe Tom or Lisa wanna add something to that?
Sure, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great, thank you for hearing us tonight. Lived here for about 13 years and I don't know if you're familiar with Harold Street, it's a very quiet side street. Speed limit on this street, 20 miles an hour. It gets more dog traffic than it does cars and that's a fact, so we feel the double curb cut is yeah, it's, it's, it'll be a much more safer condition for us, for our family, for our neighbors. I've spent, sat in the living rooms of my neighbors and discussed the plan with them. Especially the ones immediately to, to my right and left and across the street, Peter and Celine as well. And Steve on the corner. And they all think it's a beautiful plan, they think it's a safe plan and no one had objections to it. And that should carry some weight in our small community. This is a very tight-knit neighborhood. Help each other, we look after each other and you know, if you've heard an objection, I'd like to hear it, I haven't heard it in my meetings with my neighbors. And really appreciate your consideration on this, it's gonna be, it's a beautiful design. It's gonna improve the property dramatically when it's, it's completed. And it'll keep cars off the street. I do like to entertain, I have a great backyard, you probably tell by the plot plan, that we, we love to entertain in the summertime. Our, there's usually a soccer game or wiffle ball game or something going on in my backyard.
Can I just interrupt? So the planning board is interested in safety and drainage on a curb cut.
No wiffle ball, got it, okay.
We, you know, it's great, you're entertaining, but
My point.
Nice to know, but.
Street, that's the thing, with this design, we keep cars on, from parking on the street, obstructing view, obstructing flow of traffic, it's just a much more eloquent design than we currently have or could ever have. That's really all I'd like to say and thank you for your consideration.
All right, thank you, any comments from the board? Ms. Creighton?
I'm sorry to, maybe Sue can answer this. I know we, I've heard that we only, that we restrict our, our lots to one curb cut. What is, I'm trying to find that in the zoning, where is, do you know where that is, Sue?
I don't, I don't believe that they're restricted, I think they can get your permission, so.
Certainly I found that, so, so I'm wrong, that it's not, it's not a zoning requirement, is that correct?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, thank you.
So when I was out there, I did notice that the road kind of curves where the existing curb cut is. So to keep that curb cut open, maybe has, had some concern with me with cars turning and then seeing someone coming out. And I'm wondering why people just can't come in from the other side and then pull straight forward to that extra spot without having the secondary opening. So those were my two comments on that. Any other board members have comments? Mr., Ms. Foley?
Thanks, Ron, I had a chance to go out there today and, and look at it. I see where the design is coming from and I see that corner that you're talking about. So as part of our discussion, I would like to get a clear picture of, of that sight line, I don't know if DP, I think DPW did weigh in on this one. Yeah, I, you know, if it were to go the way of two curb cuts, I would opt for the, the smaller, reduce it from 16 to maybe 14. And because the current curb cut is quite wide, so I think it would actually be kind of evening out the, the amount of space that's being used there. So yeah, those are just my initial comments.
Sarah?
Um, I think Laura will disagree with me, but I, in this case, feel like the pulling fit nose out into the street, which may or may not happen when they, is, is a greater safety than backing out, so I, I would tend to favor this.
Any other comments from the board, Christina? Need to darken your hand.
I just turned it on, you saw it. Um, so I think my general concern, and it's not with the project, it's just going forward in general, is the two curb cuts. It seems to be the norm, so I guess if we do approve this, I would like to distinguish this and why we're approving the two going forward, so we don't set a precedent, I mean, I feel like the last three out of five have been two. I don't think that's a great pattern, seeing that we might go to a lot of a lot more population in the near future, so we're gonna need these street parking spots apparently. So I would like to distinguish in a on the plan and the decision, whatever we do, why we're doing it and maybe talk about the safety in that.
Mary?
I just wanted to add that this might be an opportunity to look at our curb cut bylaw and say, you know, maybe fine-tune it for one versus two and, and put requirements or restrictions on when we would go towards the two, I mean, we don't have it now, so you know, we don't do any restrictions on, I don't think, any number of curb cuts, so I think it merits us looking at that bylaw as we're going through others.
Okay, Laura?
My concerns are similar to yours, Ron, that the sight line on the curve there is not ideal, I do think removing the fence helps from a couple of different points of view, does improve sightlines, it also improves sightlines to the house, so you'll know where the front door is. And my, my belief is that one curb cut is safer than two inherently because it's just that many fewer opportunities for pedestrians and vehicles, but I hear where you're coming from, Sarah, I just, I take the opposite view of it. And I, I think Mary had a good point about, this might be an opportunity to, we should go back and look at this because apparently we need more clarity on it. Some guidance there.
Okay, um, I've listened, I think maybe I would be more amenable to the two curb cuts if they were shorter, as to Mary's point in whis.
Ron, could you possibly, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Yeah.
I was just gonna ask if we could, the DPW advised, could we just hear that again before we finish discussion?
Yeah, I don't know if I can dig that up easily, Sarah, do you have that?
I don't have it, but I think the DPW recommended one curb cut for just reduce traffic and driveway interactions. I can look for it.
Any other comments from the board, Chris, Gary? Okay.
Actually, Ron, I think a mitigating factor in this is that it's not a heavily congested road. If it were, I would have real concerns with this. I think this is an example of trying to balance the rights of the owners to do what they want to do to their property versus public safety on the roadways. I would certainly concur that the driveway width should be reduced tremendously if we're gonna allow, allow tourism. I would say maybe even 12 feet, not 14. Would be more, I guess, more in keeping with the context of the neighborhood. And I don't really quite understand why the two, you know, I, I share your, your opinion, Ron, that the second curb cut doesn't really add that much and might even make it more confusing for us, this is just an opinion, frankly, but make it more confusing for visitors to figure out where the front door is when you have this loop in front of the driveway. But that's, it's just an opinion.
It's for Remco to figure.
I'm sorry?
That's for you to figure out how to guide people to the front of the house.
Well, I, you know, I do think because the lot, it, it's true, it's a difficult house because of that condition, but the lot does flare out on the side, on the south side, which then allows you to have a vantage point of the, of the, of the front door. Again, we, from a, from an overall traffic point of view, I think it'll be relatively clear. I, you know, the chafes are gonna use the one that's right in front of the garage and anybody coming up to the, to the house as a guest would likely use the other one. Because it is, the, the front door will be apparent there. And if, if guests were to come from the other side, they would notice right away that there's a double garage door in front of them over there and so the front door must be around the corner. I think it will become fairly apparent there. I, and so that's my answer to that. Now, if, if we were to, if the board feels strongly that we should reduce the size of the curb cuts, the chafes and I have not had a lot of time yet to really look at that, and so I think that that's important, that, that we get to look at that, if that's, if that's okay. Or if you just say, you know, it has to stick to 14 feet, then, then, then Tom and Lisa can decide now, but you know, that's, that's what we could, this, we could look at. One thing with regards to the DPW, we did receive a copy of, of, of his letter and his main comment was unless there have some extraordinary circumstances. So his discussion was that the two of them there should be smaller. And, but my concern was is that he may not know the difficulty in terms of the, the actual size that we have between the new garage and the road itself. And that's really where it comes down at, that it, it makes turnarounds very difficult in front of that garage. And we think that that actually may cause other guests, other people to actually back out of that driveway instead of what we're hoping, which is always nose-first out of there, and that's why we think that this again is, is safer.
Okay, I'll take a motion from the board on this. We're ready, or Sarah, sorry.
Sue put the, the, she and I both found the comments from Nate DeRozier, as proposed, it seems too large and would occupy a lot of street printage, if they want to propose a smaller second curb cut, that would be more comments from Nate DeRozier as proposed, it seems too large and would occupy a lot of street printage. If they want to propose a smaller second curb cut, that would be more reasonable.
So we want to put a motion to accept the double curb cuts with a twelve foot width each, something like that. Chris or someone want to make a motion?
I'll move that they be approved with a twelve foot driveway width at the curb.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, I'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Creighton.
Yes.
Mr. Lucio.
Yes.
Ms. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert.
I missed the meeting. I don't believe I can vote, but I would abstain because I wasn't, even if I could.
Mr. Only.
Yes.
Ms. Tenny.
Oh.
And the chair votes, yes. Motion passes five, one, one.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thanks for your time and your consideration. Much appreciated. One question, do we need to reissue a revised plan with the twelve feet?
Yes, would you do that? And then you can put in a, yeah, wanted to do that and then work that with Sharon.
Okay, we'll do. Great. Thanks again. Thank you, I appreciate the work you do. Thanks so much. Appreciate you.
Thanks. Okay, a little late on this. I'm going to open a public hearing to modifications in the limited commercial district. The public hearing notice has been duly noticed and advertised in the cricket. The modifications include to amend section four point four point six to expand the areas within the limited commercial district that allowed laboratory uses by special permit only, to include the areas east of School Street. Two, to remove redundant language concerning special permits for uses in the LCD and use the general special permit language. Three, to amend section five point five to allow greater building height for commercial buildings in the LCD. And four, to amend sections five, seven, five point seven point one, two, and three, to make changes to the lot width, lot coverage, and setback requirements within the LCD. I will chair the meeting. Gary Gilbert will will present the specific details of the recommended regulation cha- changes. Sarah Creighton will moderate the public discussion period. And then we will take public comments and then close the public hearing, and then the board will vote final language for the warrant at town meeting. So at this time, I would like to have a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Ms. Creighton.
Somebody else has to second. I I moved it.
A second.
Second, okay, move motion made and seconded. Roll call vote, Ms. Creighton.
Yes.
Ms. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert.
Yes.
Mr. Only.
Yeah.
And Ms. Tenny.
Yes.
Okay. So with that, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Sarah for some comments on how the republic hearing will be run.
Thank you, Ron. I just want to clarify for, thank you, we have forty three people here. That's great. Appreciate everybody's time and patience. We did hold a another meeting pri- previously on February twenty eighth, we had about thirty three people there, but we had a problem at the end of the as the meeting started with not everyone being able to get in, so we decided to do this again. We did hear from many people at that meeting, so if you are do know that we heard you and the board was, the full board was in attendance on that night. So if you haven't want to reiterate a comment that you made on February twenty eighth, you certainly may. But if you could try to paraphrase it so that we get through the meeting in a reasonable time. Once Gary has finished presenting, we're gonna hear from the public and I'll give you some guidance on that at that time. I would say that if we have any obscenity or outbursts, we will mute you and to the extent we can, you will not be allowed to speak again. So with that, I'll turn it over to Gary for a summary of the zoning changes.
Sarah, could I just clarify? I was not at the twenty eighth meeting.
Oh, apologies. So not everybody was there. So thank you, Mary.
Can you see this?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. All right, well, this is a map showing the the extent of the limited commercial district. It's the area basically north of Route one twenty eight, which is the yellow line here. And we currently allow a variety of uses in the area west of Pine Street. Pine Street's this white line here, which goes brings you to the dump. We're talking about adding an additional area, which is east of School Street. School Street is this white line that sort of goes vertically on the drawing. I think you're all pretty familiar with the area. It's a pretty large area. So Google Earth is pretty amazing. It gives a really good view of this area east of School Street. For orientation purposes, we're now looking towards the south. That's just how it came up when I captured the image. But School Street is this line here to the right. And the medical, family medicine is for some reason highlighted here. I didn't do that. It just popped up that way. And the Manchester Athletic Club is this building here. You can see and appreciate the size of Sawmill Brook, this watershed area that really stands out. Seems to me to be a pretty healthy ecosystem. And there's also a lot of land area beyond the tennis courts of the MAC that have been cleared. You can see the extent of that excavation and earth removal that has gone on. And also see some of these storage buildings and auto repair shop and landscape companies rent space in that area. This is a blow up of it. And Laura and I walked it on the weekend. It was really quite interesting. I didn't quite realize how many big hills there are there to shield any development. For example, if you go just past the tennis courts, you end up seeing a cliff right around where my cursor is, which is this picture here, which is about to our estimation around fifty or fifty five feet tall. It may look smaller in this photo, but it's it's a pretty high cliff. So there's a number of opportunities to develop in this area that would really be shielded from one twenty eight. And we have gotten no specific, specific proposal yet to be reviewing. I'm just giving you the lay of the land. So what's going on historically? This isn't new to us to consider revising or changing the the regulations in the limited commercial district. I myself convened a meeting right around two thousand and six with the FinCom and a couple of other people to start talking about it, but we just lacked seriously lacked information and couldn't really proceed. But it came up during the talks, conversations during the master plan, during numerous discussions. We outlined possible types of uses that we might consider allowing there. Cell signaling came to the planning board the summer before last to discuss pretty much exactly what they discussed with us this year. And there was no vote taken. It was a, it was a discussion, a healthy discussion, and their suggestions seemed reasonable. The planning board for for about the year or two has considered other approaches to the area, the forty R, which would include housing. And the proposed uses we're talking about now does not include any housing whatsoever. Cell signaling then came before us in January and presented pretty, pretty close, pretty darn close to what is currently written down, and we're we're discussing now and considering bringing to town meeting. At that point in time, all seven of the planning board members gave their voted support to to consider and to continue talking about. And since then, we've worked on the language and and beat it up and sliced it and diced it, and we have language tonight, which we will finalize by a vote after the public hearing, after we close the public participation portion of the public hearing. So why are we doing this? Well, the town does need money. It's not a casual situation here. I think the town has gotten by over the years. But we have a lot of big expenses ahead of us, and some of them, we really can't appreciate how much money we'll have to put into the sea level and climate control types of efforts. The sewage treatment plant, we don't know where we're going with that. There's a number of things that are big ticket items. And we also have, we just finished the school, we're about to be paying for helping Essex pay for their new school. And I think we all would like to avoid a decade or more of constant overrides and two and a half percent tax increases to pay for to pay for them. So this is a really important slide, and I think it's really important to make the distinction between allowing something by right, which is your typical, you can buy a piece of property, build a house, just conform to the regulations versus a special permit, which is a huge hurdle. It's not an exaggeration at all to say that neither a residential nor a commercial property owner would would not consider shying away from buying a piece of land if they have to get a special permit. This happens all the time. It's a, it's a sort of a can of worms. There's a whole bunch of reviews involved. So you not only have to build to the dimensional regulations, but we are compelled based on our law to have a number of boards and departments review the applications. We review it for just about everything and anything you can think. I think it's important to note that this whole area falls in the Water Resource Overlay Protection District. And because of that, any application will be reviewed by a very strict, in my opinion, Conservation Commission, which is a seven member board. And then the planning board, which is a very detail oriented, seven member planning board, administers the fourteen pages of Water Resource Overlay Protection District regulations. We're not going to let anything slip by that might be detrimental to the town. I think I can assure you of that. So special permits require a complete project review, as I said. They allow us to impose any conditions that we feel are reasonable. They require us to get opinion from a number of other boards and departments, and the applicant has to pay for any peer review that we feel we need. Why can we deny special permit? If we basically, if we don't find it acceptable, or if we find it detrimental to the town, or if or if some sort of negotiated interventions can't be made that will minimize any sort of impacts. There there the sky's the limit to some extent, but we we have to approach this by being reasonable. So currently, the land uses we allow with only a site plan review are things like the Family Medicine Building. They actually sit on over twelve acres of land, but could only squeeze in a rather small building, which is heavily used by the town because the existing regulations have such big setback requirements and regulation requirements. The Manchester Athletic Club is a athletic facility that's explicitly allowed, as is our municipal uses, the current compost facility. Oops. Other land uses that we allow with the site plan review and a special permit are things like laboratories, scientific research, and light manufacturing. It should be clear to people, but there are plenty of uses we do not allow there. We may have considered them or talked about in the past, but we have made no votes whatsoever, nor are we proposing any residential use or any of the other types of uses one one could imagine to be put there at this point in time. So as Ron said earlier, what we're really talking about doing is adding an additional area where laboratories can be built. As my first slide showed, the the west area of the LCD allows them, and now we're proposing that the eastern area allow them. I think there was an amendment made at a meeting I missed to potentially consider all of the LCD for these uses with a special permit. The the we're we're proposing to increase the building height to accommodate labs. Again, you have to, if you want to allow a land use, you need to be reasonable in your regulations to begin with, and then regulate it based on your overlay protection district. Allow some height for mechanical equipment, which is normal for any sort of commercial building. And then allow the planning board to negotiate as need be and work with the applicant regarding setbacks from property lines. So these are blowups of the text, of the existing text, the new text. The first part of section four point four, there are no changes to it at all. This is the part that allows specific uses like business and offices, the MAC municipal uses. The last portion of this is on the next slide. This is all portion of section four point four. And this is the part where we're proposing the changes to allow the lab use to be east of School Street. And here's the area, this is the language that was just recently added, and including also the area between Pine Street and School Street. And then to eliminate this other language, which is really just redundant language, we say at the beginning of the section, we're allowing special permits. There's no need to re refer to. You also have to abide by section seven point five, for example. So this is all redundant. It's already in our our special permit regulation that we will be be getting opinions from the Conservation Commission, the Board of Health, Department of Public Works, and I believe we'll be sending out and asking for comments from other boards too, including the Board of Selectmen. So this section five point five, it was broke, we broke it down into two sections because we're allowing greater height. We wanted to make it extremely clear that we're treating residential structures differently than we're treating commercial structures there. And this is where the maximum height of fifty five feet, which makes sense for a three story lab building. And then up to fifteen feet above it for mechanical equipment if needed. Section five point seven talks about the limited commercial district where we're recommending to remove the five hundred foot minimum lot width and to modify the amount of area that can be covered by impervious on structures than total impervious surfaces to what what many of us consider to be a more normal and reasonable percentages. Again, we can, we will be reviewing a project with great scrutiny regarding what, how much impervious surface is created, and there are plenty of ways to mediate that if we get into any sort of a problem. I'll remind you that right now, there's twenty five, thirty five acres there, or whatever, of land that has nobody's doing anything about runoff there. It's just getting rained on and running off. So any development there would be would be better, in my opinion, than what we currently have. And then in section six point two point five, we talk about allowing some latitude with the special permit granting authority, which is what the planning board would be in in requiring setbacks on the property. I think that's the last slide. So at this point, I'll turn the discussion over to Sarah.
Okay, thank you, Gary. So just to be clear, as Gary said, Gary, why don't we not share your screen right now? And then if we need it, we'll come back to it. That way allows us to see each other to the extent we can. So just to be clear, the process here is that following the public hearing, we will vote a final article, and that would be reviewed by voted at town meeting. So this is not a vote or, but it go, it will go to town meeting. And I'm going to answer two questions that we have heard in advance here. The first is, do we have a specific proposal from an applicant? And the answer is no. This is simply a hearing on the the zoning, proposed zoning changes, and not a review of any particular proposal. And secondly, people have asked, how does this changes affect the matter that's before the zoning board of appeals for the forty, for the large residential development, and Town Council has advised us that it is not, this does, would not affect proceedings for that. So I'm going to open it to the public. If you could please wait to be recognized, I'll ask the other board members to help me see people's hands. If you if you go to the bottom of your screen, there's a raised hand function at the end. If you have not had a chance to be seen or heard, we'll sort of open it up to to we'll sort of open it up to, to, um, people who couldn't figure out how to raise their hand or whose technology didn't work, but, um, the other thing is please state your name and address for the record clearly so that our secretary can write that down. And please, um, try to state a comment, uh, rather than a question. We'll, we'll take comments for the most part here. So with that, I'll turn it over to, uh, anyone who, from the public who'd like to give us some feedback. Look forward to hearing it. Peter Crabtree.
Hi, good evening. Peter Crabtree, nine Windermere Park. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to offer my thoughts and support for the applicant's request to make a few modifications to the existing zoning regulations for the eastern portion of the LCD. In the interest of time, I'll try to run through my thoughts quickly. In studying the town's goals and desires for future development as set forth in Manchester's master plan, and then thinking about how I, as a thirty-year resident of Manchester, would like to see our town continue to evolve, the subject property holds significant potential to aid in that future growth. I'm aware there's been a variety of different development scenarios, as Gary mentioned. I discussed over the past few years for this parcel, ranging from residential housing to a mixed-use development consisting of a hotel, assisted living facility, and medical buildings. Hearing these various ideas stoked my curiosity, so with the current owner's permission, about a year ago, I, I walked the entire site. And in thinking about its future development, five things have become more apparent to me. The first is, due, due to its location off Atwater Ave, I think it would be very challenging to develop it into a viable residential housing site and integrate it into the fabric of the town. Most residents living in this location would tend to feel like they're living sort of in an outlier, somewhere between Manchester and Essex, but not really feeling attached to either town. In addition, although a residential use would generate real estate taxes, there would be a significant offset in town services required. So in the end, the net financial gain in tax revenue, if any, would be quite limited. And point number two, if the site were to be developed into a corporate life-size campus such as cell signaling is proposing to do, it'll allow Manchester to grow its commercial tax base and bring in significant tax revenues. And as importantly, the demand side of the fiscal impact equation for town services would be minimal, resulting in a substantial net tax gain that can be used to finance the replacement of our aging infrastructure in the various capital improvements that Gary showed earlier on his, on his slide, thereby improving the quality of life for all of us. Point number three, I'm aware there have been quite a few uh concerns voiced that if the parcel is developed, it could be potential impacts to the adjacent environmental resources. From my experience, I see things a little bit differently. The site previously was mined for its abundance of rock and gravel, which has left the underlying land severely scarred. And to this day, excuse me, and to this day, uh, there continues to be ongoing earthwork activity on the site. I believe developing the parcel thoughtfully will result in an overall reduction to potential environmental impacts such as stormwater runoff and erosion. And in developing the site, the applicant would be required to follow BMPs or pest management practices, and will be required to work with our local conservation commission to attain the necessary permits. And perhaps as importantly, if you were to examine the past history of the applicant, you will see that the owners have been excellent stewards of the land and are conscious, conservation-minded. This should bring all of us a certain degree of comfort that their engineers and design team will be directed to be very sensitive in their approach to divining their campus and ensuring that the surrounding environment is rightly protected. Point number four, bringing entities such as CST to the area will undoubtedly give us a much-needed injection of support to our downtown businesses and shops. With the changing of shopping habits, um, our local businesses could certainly use a new source of customers. And lastly, due to the location off of that order avenue, much of the proposed development can be designed so that it's visually invisible to the town. Thoughtful guidance can be set forth by the planning board during the crafting of a special permit that will govern the build-out so that the land plan for the campus can be designed in a sensitive and attractive manner. So based on the above points, I encourage the planning board and eventually the town's residents at town meeting to support this initial step in permitting the process in the, sorry, in the permitting process. I think the proposed use has great potential. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy.
Great, thank you. Sandy Rogers, eighty-two Old Essex Road. I'm, have a series of, of things I want to bring up. First is that when this was first discussed, we were talking about east of School Street, and now we have added in um land between Pine and School Street and also west of Pine Street. I want to state that that is a extreme concern. When we're talking about what's between Pine and School Street, we're talking about Shingle Hill and other land between Shingle Hill and Pine Street, which is very environmentally sensitive and one of the highest points in our town geographically. The second point is the height regulations seem to talk about the limited commercial district in general, not necessarily just lab facilities, that we are now increasing the building height by fifty-seven percent. And when you add in the additional fifteen feet, you're doubling in size here. And it looks like this will allow, not only for labs, but any commercial building could be lifted up to that point. And again, if we look at all of the LCD, including east of School Street, some of the highest points in Manchester are included there, and then we're allowing an additional height there, which could be a, a, a big concern, not only from a aesthetic point of view, but from a light pollution point of view, and so much that we need to be considering that. Both of the residential and limited commercial district heights say it's based on mean construction grade of the average elevation of the building. And with a site that's considering multiple buildings, which, um, they have stated already that the main area is eighty feet, you're already starting at eighty feet, and highest points are at one twenty feet in, in the LCD, and it is part of the proposal and the property being considered for development. That is a major concern. That means we're going to be building huge buildings up at high points that will be visible from miles away. We're going to have light. There's no uh bylaws regarding light or anything built into all of this build-out that's predicted. The maximum lot coverage we're doubling in buildings, and we're allowing sixty percent impervious surfaces, which means a lot of what we could be building here would be just cement, and we're talking impervious surfaces versus pervious surfaces, or any of the other kinds of green building requirements that are being placed into zoning bylaws all around the state that are not being built into these bylaws right now. I, and the other one was just a, a question about, you know, sort of better site design. Not really sure about what could be legally done to say that it's a better site design or not. Gary, um, mentioned the word overlay in his his introduction. Um, I haven't seen any discussion about potentially cutting up the LCD with overlays or even zoning overlays so that we can mitigate issues regarding those areas that are very high, that are very rocky, that are closer to Sawmill Brook, to ensure that nothing happens to compromise our land. And then the other thing is, just a question, um, I thought that last meeting, the last planning board meeting, there was a vote on wording, so it sounds like, um, we have this extra time. Please clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Uh, you spoke to one of the issues that the board will certainly be talking about later, which is, which, what parts of the LCD this should extend to. Um, the laboratory use is currently already allowed west of Pine Street, and uh, the scope of our public notice does not allow us to change that, but the other two areas, the, the area between Pine and School and the areas east of School will be things we'll be talking about after the hearing closes. So thank you. I also just want to clarify that section five point seven point one, that is, we rec, we're discussing amended, I believe just refers to the LCD district, not to commercial buildings throughout the entire town. Just to clarify those points that you raised. Um, thank you. Let's see. Help me out. I, I'm not seeing other hands. If, um, Mary, I think we'll take comments from the board later unless you have a point of clarification.
Yeah, just a point of clarification. It's not a comment. I, I'm not syncing up the map that was shown of the LCD with our language that's in the bylaw. Could we see Gary's map again of what portions of the LCD this is addressing? I think there's some confusion on that.
I don't think we need to see the map. I think there are three sections, west of Pine Street, between Pine Street and School Street, and east of School Street. So his map did not color the part between Pine and School. Uh, Mr. Hall.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Denny Hall, twenty Masconahemo Street, Manchester. First of all, thanks for, uh, putting in the work to consider this. The reality here in Manchester is we need additional tax revenue. And, uh, if you look at a town like Beverly as an example, that was, for the longest time, had the highest tax rate in the area, and now has one of the lowest, uh, largely because they were successfully, uh, redeveloped the United Shoe Property. Our tax rate keeps going up and essentially doubles every fifteen years, more or less. And to the extent that we can mitigate it, and it's a balancing act, it's clearly a balancing act, but to the extent that we can mitigate the increases in taxes by, eh, eh, by growing our, our commercial tax tax base in a, in a responsible manner. We, we, we need to consider this seriously because increasingly people can't afford to stay here. And you see it in the housing prices, but it's also the real estate tax rates. So I would urge the board to carefully consider, uh, this proposal, because I think it's accretive, and it, and it will allow more people to stay here in town, which increasingly is becoming a, a, a very serious issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'll go across my screen. Uh, the next person I see is George Davis.
I haven't adjusted my camera. I don't know where I am. Hopefully you can see me.
Yes, we can see and hear you.
Okay, great. Thanks, Sarah and members of the board. I'm actually, I'm, I've been actually feeling, you know, pretty good about what I've been hearing about this. And, and, and actually also thinking, feeling fairly, um, positive about cell signaling. I know this is more general than that. It's not specifically about cell signaling, but I also know that cell signaling has been a, a big uh, influence on all of this, and, and I, it seems to me they're a pretty worthy candidate for the, uh, for the LCD. I did look today, um, at the, uh, the town's sort of like uh, mapping, uh, and I turned on the, um, uh, the layer for uh, topography, and I did notice, uh, and I think Sandy, uh, referred to this also, that there is some, there is some real high ground, relative high ground, um, within this area east of east of School Street. And in fact, the highest area, um, which is within the location that cell signaling, I think, is focused on, is nearly as high as, as Shingle Place Hill. And I don't have a problem with the idea of the building height. But then I'm like picturing, whoa, what if that building height is on top of the high point within this area? And that, to me, looks like not a good idea from the town's point of view. So it, it, it occurs to me that maybe the, the key consideration isn't so much what's the height of the building, but what is the elevation of the height of the building? And I don't know if any thought has been given in that direction, uh, by the, uh, by the planning board in uh, in composing of this, these kinds of changes that, um, are being proposed. I also was very surprised tonight to see the inclusion of the LCD between Pine Street and School Street, and any of you that know me will know that I'm very concerned about what the implications of that uh, are from a, from an environmental, um, point of view. I also see that you're, um, trying to do some enabling, you're trying to apply some, uh, sort of sensible parameters around all of this. And I'm wondering why in doing that sort of thing, there, there isn't any that I have seen anyway, uh, but I don't necessarily know all the ins and outs of the bylaws here. So, uh, what I'm thinking about is, um, uh, noise and light, um, kind of guidelines. And so if there are any such, uh, guidelines, um, then I, I would be, I would be appreciative of you're bringing that, um, uh, to my, uh, to my awareness. And, uh, and, and I think, I, I think that's my, my input for, uh, for the time being.
And for the rec, for the record, George, your, um, street addresses.
Wood Home Road.
Thank you. Okay. Mark Weld.
Thank you, Sarah. I'm, uh, Mark Weld, fifteen School Street, and speaking, uh, this evening as a member of the Finance Committee. I was recently appointed a, uh, to be the liaison from the Finance Committee, as you all consider, um, this proposal. And, uh, I am not here tonight to either advocate or, uh, speak in opposition for it, but only to, uh, ask that as, um, with any zoning change, especially one of this magnitude, there are many considerations, and, and many times those considerations are evaluated with the use of consultants. And they're based on modeling, giving a myriad of considerations relative to the permitted uses, the associated densities and, and matters such as that. So virtually all these considerations, such as traffic, utilities, use of public assets and services like school, police, fire, et cetera, have financial implications, uh, and generally on the cost side of the, the equation. So in this regard, the Finance Committee would just appreciate it very much because we will be called upon to make a recommendation on a financial basis that the planning board consider these financial impacts on the, on the town and not dissimilar, uh, to the role that, um, developers have in a forty B, where they have to carefully outline what the implication is and what those financial implications are. So, um, on behalf of the Finance Committee, I'm pleased to work with whomever on the planning board to, uh, assure that these, um, considerations are undertaken as part of this process so that prior to the town meeting, if there is a warrant to be, uh, proposed, we can understand those financial implications and we can understand those financial implications and therefore make a recommendation to the town based on those understandings. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheila Hill.
Thank you, Sarah. Sheila Hill, 2 Running Ridge Row. Sarah, I believe this is a public hearing. I find it inappropriate to discourage questions versus comments. It's only reasonable that people have questions about, that's why we have public hearings. And I think residents should be encouraged to ask questions, not discouraged. Thank you.
Do you have a specific question that you'd like us to try to answer?
No, I don't have a question. My, my comment is it was inappropriate to have discouraged questions at the start of this hearing.
Thanks for your comment.
You're welcome.
Sue, I see two participants have raised hands. Sandy Rogers and Sheila, we've heard from them. Sue, do you see others that I'm missing? Anybody else that is unable to raise their hand? Maybe just unmute yourself for a moment and speak up.
I don't see any others.
Lorraine Iovani.
Okay, hold on one second. Okay, I'm gonna take a list. Lorraine Iovani. Anybody else want to just speak up and get your name on my list here, please? Okay, Lorraine, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My only comment.
Sorry, could you tell me?
Right, excuse me. Lorraine Iovani, 28 Pine Street. Thank you. My comment is this, with the site elevation and the height of the building and hardware to be put on top, which all goes immediately to the language, I believe, that's in this zoning proposed warrant. Has any, well, I don't want to turn it into a question. What I want to say is this, if this area with a very high building in terms of, again, the site elevation, the height of the building and any hardware at the top, if it approaches 150 feet or more, and maybe even 200, I have no idea. There is a requirement, if it's in the flight path to Beverly Airport, and I, I think you would have to verify this, but there is a requirement with the FAA to get their okay on this sort of thing, obviously for air safety, you know, for aircraft safety. So I want to bring that to your attention because I have absolutely no idea how tall anything will be except for, you know, when some of the measurements or citations you have that you've measured, mentioned. But site elevation is a concern if you, you know, you put very, you have a high point and then, of course, the building and then whatever hardware or whatever is required for bio labs. So this is something to consider and to consider seriously if, you know, if the aircraft do turn, you know, on approach to Beverly Airport. And this is not unusual, even off-site from an airport. Many people who are developers are required to check in. There's a whole, there's a regulation on this with the FAA to find out whether or not it will interfere with flight aircraft safety. So just a thought. And I know it's, it's something you probably haven't even thought about, but I just wanted to make that clear. All right? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Are there others that I'm not seeing who have been unable to raise their hand? Please just state your name and I'll try to call on you. I'm not seeing any additional. Sandy Rogers, you still have your hand up. Do you need, do you have another brief comment?
Yeah, this is just a comment that I think that it's very confusing to follow that some, the, the, the beginning of the, the bylaw changes, my understanding is to allow the additional use case of the labs. But the height restrictions and everything else go to any commercial building, not necessarily for labs. So that if this particular development goes away and another developer wants to come in and do a different kind of commercial building, that those height changes, the setbacks, the impervious surfaces, all of that would remain as being for any commercial building. So I think that, that's my understanding of what I'm reading. So I think that needs to be clarified for people so that they understand it. And that if we're including something like the area between Pine Street and School Street, that say the 40B goes away, that is viable to build any commercial building on top of it too, because that's being included in these changes because it's part of the LCD. And I think that a lot of people are potentially conflating the particular development that they've heard of versus the zoning and what far reaching changes this could have on our entire space. Thank you.
Sarah Melish. Sarah, you're not muted. You're on mute.
Sorry. Sarah Melish, 11 Bennett Street. I have concerns with respect to including the west side of School Street. As we've been looking at the 40B project, it's very clear that that's a very environmentally sensitive area of town. I think it should be totally excluded from the LCD. The only way anything can go in there is blasting 40 feet off the top of the hill. There's nothing else that's buildable. And, and I just think it's short sighted to even include it in the LCD, particularly to include it in these changes. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to again invite anybody who would like to speak, to sing out their names so I can get you on my list. Okay, I'm hearing nothing else from public comment. Ron, do we want to close the public hearing and then discuss this among ourselves is the next step?
Yes, we should take a motion to close the public hearing.
Excuse me, Sarah. We're closed. We would be closing only the public comment portion of the public.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Gary. Is that, I think it's, well, maybe it's, okay. So you have that a motion, Gary?
No.
Yes, I would make that, I would move that we close the public comment portion of the public hearing so we can discuss and vote as a planning board.
Sharon, you have a comment?
You don't have to make a motion to close the public portion of the comments. You make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
So we, we can close the public hearing and discuss the comments, correct, Sharon?
Yes.
That's true.
So I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So I moved.
I'll second.
Discussion. Roll call vote, Ms. Creighton.
Yes.
Ms. Delicio. Ms. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert.
Yes.
Mr. Olney.
Yes.
Ms. Tenny.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carry 7-0. Okay, thank you for everyone participating. I'd like to continue now with board's discussion and comments of what we heard and try to finalize some kind of language for the Warren article. Any comments from the board on basis of tonight's comments?
I'll start, I think, if you don't mind.
Yes, Sarah.
I think we had asked the public for some, we had hoped to hear tonight some of the things that we did hear about whether or not the full LCD, the area between, particularly between Pine Street and School Street, should include this laboratory use. And I think we heard from a number of people, and I think I'll speak for myself. I, I feel that that area does not need to be included in this, just to be clear about why we did include it. Remind everybody, Town Council had suggested that we include it. And that is why we decided to include it so that it could be discussed tonight. But it's my opinion that we heard tonight, and it's also my personal opinion that this laboratory use should be only extended to east of Pine Street.
Sarah, Mary Foley.
Thank you. I was, I was going to say pretty much the same thing that Sarah said. I think, I think people raise valid concerns on that and I, it wasn't in there at the beginning. I think it makes sense to remove. Perhaps we should have some discussion on the elevation concerns of the, the topography and then adding the building height. And then also how we'll address the FinCom component with this bylaw and other bylaws.
Mary and Sarah, can I just ask for a clarification? Sarah, it sounded like you said east of Pine Street. Did you mean east of School Street? Can you unmute and clarify?
Yes, east of School Street is what we're talking about. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, thank you.
Gary Gilbert.
I'd just like to respond a little bit, maybe for the board, but mostly for the public listening that we, we won't accidentally let somebody build at the highest point of the site and build a big building there. The highest points don't even have a large enough footprint area, particularly for a large building. But it's our job to very much take topography into account. And the Google Earth maps I showed earlier, I was hoping they would make it clear that there's a lot of area cleared that is much lower than the high points. I showed a photo of a cliff. It's not the only cliff there. It's around 50 some feet high. So it, it's also incredibly cheaper to put a building where you already have cleared land and you already have a lot of bedrock or a lot of solid rock. It's much less expensive to be developing that portion of the site. But those are issues we will weigh when we have a project before us. We won't accidentally not notice that someone's proposing to be at the highest point of the site. But we have the power, regulatory control to demand that they cite it elsewhere. So I think people should rest assured that we're, we're paying attention. The Concom's paying attention, the whole town is. And, and I also would, I'm not sure exactly if Mary made this point, but I, I am not concerned, as concerned about Town Council's comment to us about being concerned about spot zoning. I believe that we're opening this up to a second area, and I believe that's enough to avoid any accusation of spot zoning. I don't particularly support allowing these uses in the central area of the LCD. That would mean east of Pine Street and west of School Street. Thanks.
Thanks, Gary. Chris.
So I think the, the area between Pine and School Streets is kind of a moot point because most of it is designated as conservation land anyway, and no one could build on it. It's, you know, it's, it's essentially a park. And as for the Shingle Hill part of it, I think if it ever came before the Planning Board under a special permit, I doubt that it would be approved. But again, it's a moot point, and I think I'm happy to support limiting the, this proposal to the areas east of School Street. I do want to, for the public's benefit, make it clear that there are specific criteria that the Planning Board would have to follow in granting a special permit. And that includes everything from lighting and traffic concerns to fiscal analysis. All of that is part of the review process. So it's not like we're going to be doing this in a vacuum. We've got a set of guidelines that we have to adhere to as, and findings we have to make as part of the special permit process. And I hope that gives people some comfort that we're not just on a lark trying to approve a laboratory that hasn't been approved yet or even submitted for our consideration at this point.
Laura Tenny.
My thoughts are that the appropriate footprint for the development is east of School Street and west of Pine Street for, for commercial or laboratory. I would, I very much agree with the comments that, that the lands between Pine and School, where they are not already in Conservation Commission, are by and large steep slopes or ledge or wetlands and not appropriate for a large footprint of development. So I think we're, if we focus on those two areas, those are the right ones. Just a couple of other things to say. I, I think we're taking some of the things that we are concerned about, such as the view shed, the, you know, the final elevation of buildings. When I walk the site that's east of School Street, my observations are there is a lot of disturbance there, which already actually lends itself pretty well to a redevelopment if the development is sited on the lower part of the site, which is, as Gary noted in his slides, there's a 30 to 50 foot kind of ledge cliff there, which is the remnant of the quarry activities that have gone on before. There are a lot of loose soils and uncontrolled erosion there. So seeing responsible storm, responsible development that includes stormwater best practices, I think, is, would benefit the site and the water quality management, and we could get that into the special permit. Perhaps as we talk about percent impervious, we may want to add some additional performance requirements, such as managing, you know, 25 to 2 stormwater management runoff and, and having the hydrology of the site work in a sort of pre-development condition, which is a common requirement for developments. And we could put that either in LCD language or in the special permit where we're already taking a look at some of those other performance requirements. I'll stop there for now. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Christina Delicio.
Thank you, Ron. As far as where we should extend and talk about where this is appropriate, just wanted to bring back for the last few years, when we did talk about the LCD, it was only the east of School Street. So I think it is only appropriate to make this applicable to the east of School Street. Our discussions over the last two years specifically excluded west of Pine. So I don't think it's appropriate to make this decision this quickly when we've excluded it for the last two years. And I would like to bring back the FinCom's concern. I know that those things that you're, if you've mentioned, we will see those in the special permitting process. But I think some of the town infrastructure that might be needed, water pipes out to the line, that, that's not going to be addressed in the special permit process. So how will getting pipes and water and sewer out to that facility impact that? So I think there is a lot to be discussed financially before this town meeting happens. That's it for now. Thank you.
Christina, Sarah.
I'm just looking some, I was looking at the height restrictions. So I'll come back, come back to me on that and I'll, I'll be, I was looking up our existing bylaw. So, sorry.
My question, and maybe Greg could help me, is how do we give the Finance Committee numbers prior to town meeting when we don't have a specific proposal? Is that what they're asking for?
So, Ron, I think, right, it won't be specific. It'll just be more generic.
Looking at what is developable, some. Rough calculations of, of what a maximum build out would be, or take a, a reasonable estimation of what. Construction might be over the next ten fifteen years based on. Based on past history, in terms of the amount of development we've seen. In terms of coming on water and sewer typically, if there was an extension of water and sewer. Uh, to a development, we would certainly expect the developer to pay, um, the lion's share of that, if not all of it. But i- in terms of some sort of a calculation, you, you do some. You know, we have X number of lots that are developable and certain percentage of that land. Is, is not developable, so you, you come up with a reasonable estimation of new construction. What sort of, uh, revenues might that bring, you have to obviously make a lot of assumptions about, uh. What kind of project goes in, but let's, you know, let's say you have one research lab and a couple of. Of, uh, new office, offices going in. You make some assumptions like that, and you put together some service needs that those would have, and, and there are some. Some formulaic approaches to that, we could certainly ask, uh, the consultant or, or MIPC to help us with some of those projections.
Thank you, Sarah.
Um, yeah, I, I'm looking at our proposed language very specifically, and I can share my screen if, if. You want, but the question about the height. Extension to fifty-five feet is in our proposed, um, draft. Limited to limited commercial district, um, and I can share that screen. So this is our, uh, the, the draft that we're currently working on it, and the section that Gary. Detailed is by deleting five point five and substituting. Height restrictions and residential districts and general districts and. This height, additional height is in simply the limited commercial district. That would extend to the entire limited commercial district as we have it written right now. The other thing on that topic, um, I'm trying to figure out, and stick share, is that, um. When you're talking about trying to reduce pervious surface, you're better to go up than to go out. So there's a trade off that special permit will review, but, um, you know, if you can make your buildings footprint smaller, you reduce its. Pervious or impervious surface, um, you know, of, of, a sprawling one-story building takes up more. More footprint than a, um, building one-third the size that's three stories.
Ms Foley.
Thank you, um, we haven't, so we're, we're proposing this bylaw for all of the LCD. We haven't discussed the, um, Pine Street side of it much, um, with all, with. Changing the height and the impervious surfaces there, that's most, I think strictly all untouched land. What if we propose to have? Maintain the heights and the, um, impervious surfaces as our current bylaw on that side of the LCD. And changed it for this side of the LCD. Um, you know, we're doing a broad sweep change, and I don't know that we've really vetted it that, you know, those are some high. Elevations over on the Gordon College side, and it's a lot of land, I don't have it in front of me, it's like a hundred and forty, a hundred and sixty acres, something like that. I think it merits a discussion of. Are we thinking this fully through? For all of the LCD.
Thanks, it makes sense, is that a, um, does that give a? Thing to spot zoning, by specifically doing that, Sue maybe?
I think you could, um, uh, many commercial districts have varying heights and, um. And different requirements, you know, you can have a, 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 a commercial area that specializes in light manufacturing or whatever, and then you've got a commercial district that's restaurants and. Bars and shops, and they can have different tax rates, they can have different heights, they can have all sorts of different regulations.
Ron, I, I, I would say that the very reasons that you would want to allow the height. East of Pine Street still remain to west, or east of School Street still remain west of Pine Street. It's a, it's a better environmental benefit, it's a greater environmental benefit, so anytime you. Look at a larger structure or a higher structure rather than a structure that makes a larger footprint, um, you, you'll have less impact, so. I, I think it's, I think it's. Makes sense in both areas.
Sarah.
Uh, my question is for either Greg or Alan, uh, procedurally, our public notice. Didn't restrict the area of this, um, height change, but it is a. More, I guess, a more generous use. So could we, if we wanted to limit it, limit this height. For, for this town meeting, um, to one portion of the limited commercial district, would that be, um, okay or not? Just given our public notice didn't restrict. The area in any way for the issue around, um, height.
So in, in general, I would say that if you're making it more restrictive, that that direction is generally allowed. It's when you make something, you're expanding or making it less restrictive than you originally warned, that is when you can run into some problems. So unless Alan disagrees, I think in this case, if you're, if you wanted to pull back. And, and, and relax the restrictions only on the east side, I don't think you run afoul of, of your public notice.
Alan, you're, you're muted.
I'm, I'm sorry, I was away from the conversation briefly, I didn't hear the question.
The question is, our public notice indicated that we would be, um, in. Increasing, contemplating an increase in commercial buildings height throughout the limited commercial district. If we were to restrict that height restriction to only a portion of the LCD. Would that run afoul of our public notice?
I, I don't believe it would, um, and, and what matters actually for town meeting purposes is. Not the notice of the hearing, but the warrant article. And, and I think. If, if you, if you win, if you placed in the warrant. An article to increase the height limitation throughout the district. And then reduced it to only portions of the district, that would not be outside the scope of the warrant.
But to do it the other way around, where we limit, or we increase the height through only a portion of the district, and we wanted to expand it, that would not be allowed.
No, we're, we're talking now about a change in the warrant, it, it, from, from the warrant article to the motion on town meeting floor. Yeah, I, I think, I think if that were the case, if you had a, a warrant article that proposed to reduce. Sorry, to increase the height limitation only. In a portion of the art of, of the district, and you then had a motion on town meeting floor to increase it throughout the district. That, that might be a problem, I need to think more carefully about it to give a definitive answer, but I think. That might be a problem.
Okay.
Christina Delicio.
Hi, thank you Ron, um, so I guess I just wanted to reiterate my concern about. Applying these changes to the entire LCD, we have concentrated our conversations for the last two years on the portion. East of School Street, so I guess my question to Sue is have you had conversations with people west of Pine? That are interested in developing that, because we haven't talked about this property at all for the last two years, our conversations have been, this is undisturbed land. The property east of school is disturbed, this is where we should concentrate on, so I'm surprised to hear that. Because every meeting that we've had talking about the LCD is, let's exclude it, it's pristine land, it's undisturbed. Concentrate on east of school, so again, I am only interested in changing the property. Um, the height and other restrictions of east of school, thank you.
Ron.
Sue, any comments on that?
Yeah, so what I would say is that, um, when this information, when. When Mr. Gordo first came to, first wrote to the planning board to discuss the changes to the LCD. District and, and specifically talked about height, um, they were, they didn't actually, they hadn't actually looked at. East of School Street, they actually had looked west of Pine Street, so that was the area that they were originally talking about it, they didn't talk about it. Um, specifically only that, but they said, here are changes that you could make to the LCD. I would only say that environmentally, it's better to allow the height. Than to disallow it, so I think there's. Opportunity there, um, I, it's always a special permit, so I think if there were. If there were greater environmental concerns there, then it simply wouldn't go forward, but. I, I still say that if you're going to do a height, uh, a change in height, that it is. There are greater environmental benefits for it, so if you're an environmentally sensitive area, it would seem that you would want that. Unless you're proposing taking away. The right there as well, but that's a whole different discussion, a whole different article.
Okay, so if there's no other comments, I think we have two, go ahead Sarah.
One other issue that did not come up tonight, but came up with the Board of Selectmen, and I just want to remind us, um, and, and I believe it came up. When we met on February twenty-eighth, and that is that we proposed to delete, I just want to raise it so that people remember. That delete the remainder of section four point four point six, those are the, um. Requirements that are redundant with the, um, special permit. And there was, uh, we didn't talk about it tonight, but there was some concern that that was, um. Reckless, or, that's probably too strong a word, um, it is my opinion that that is redundant with the special permit conditions elsewhere in the bylaw, but I just wanted to. How, make sure we remembered that as we talk about, um, public comment, and then when, after, when you're ready, Ron, I have, um, some proposed motions.
Laura Tenney.
Thank you Ron, I'm just thinking more about the, um, question of impervious surface and the, um, stormwater management strategies here. As an example, reference point is you can put a control on a development that requires a, this twenty-five to two, uh, management, which means that the peak flow and you pick your design storm, say it's twenty-seventy. To think about, uh, not today's storm, but a future storm projection. The peak flow of the twenty-seventy twenty-five year storm post-development, that means a storm that could occur once in every twenty-five years statistically. Is, uh, less than the twenty-seventy-two-year storm under pre-development condition, so it basically means you're taking the site. And what is today a two-year storm, which is a very common storm. And making it, uh, more stringent stormwater quality and, um, storage requirements, yeah, you can include storage or it can be stormwater quality. So that's just an example, I guess, um, partly this is a question to Sue and maybe others about where is the appropriate place to put this kind of language, I know we've been looking at. Stormwater and moving into our general requirements, or this might be a special permit kind of a condition where we're. Where we're putting additional constraints and, um, environmental constraints on a, a large development footprint. So that's a question, I think, for Sue.
Yeah, thanks, I, I do think that those performance standards should be in our, um, special permit, because I think they apply to any site. That's getting a special permit, so as we're redoing those and, and, and adding, you know, to that. Set of performance criteria, I think that's where they belong.
Thank you Sue.
Okay Sarah, I, I think we're looking at two or three changes, um, but, um, you want to rea- reiterate them, I think.
Yeah, uh, so if you don't mind, I'll, I'll share my screen, I, I, I'll take them, I'm gonna make motions one at a time with, oops, long screen. Um. So my first, um. Um, I think that, that we actually take them together because I think there's consensus on this first one, this is the draft that we had, um. Suggested on March fourteenth, and I'm suggesting that we strike between Pine Street and school, uh, between Pine Street and School Street from this. Then, uh, and that we limit it to the west of Pine Street, which we can't change it because of the public notice, even if we wanted to right now. And that we're, so we're focusing on, we're exti- we're allowing these, um, scientific lab uses east of School Street. Um, which is what we've been talking about, the second change I would propose, um, I'm gonna propose that we leave in. This section deleting the remainder of four point four point six, because it is redundant and we are. One of our larger goals here is to make our zoning bylaws streamlined and make sense and having. Specialty, uh, redundant things in the bylaw doesn't help with that larger goal. And then the third, um, proposal is that we add in this height. Restriction, so this is under five point five height regulations. We've put, we've, we've broken it into residential and commercial, limited commercial. And that we insert limited commercial district in the area west of Pine Street and east of School Street. Um, I will also, uh, not, just comment that at our next, um. Meeting on zoning, that maybe we consider where the limited commercial district is, but that is not for tonight. So I'll make a motion that we, um, approve the article. As we had, as, as approved, as voted on March fourteenth with those. With the following two changes as shown there.
Eric, did you scroll up, what was the first versus the second?
Okay, the first change is, from what we have voted on March fourteenth is to strike between Pine Street and School Street. This is the March fourteenth. Article that we, um, had voted last meeting. Or next to last meeting, um.
Okay, so why are we striking that and then keeping in the height, that's?
No, no, and in the height, we're limiting the height. Now, in the limited commercial dir- district, we're limiting this, um, height, additional height. To the area west of Pine Street and east of School Street.
Okay, I thought all the conversations that we just had were to remove it from west of Pine.
My proposal is that we leave it, I think there was disagreement on that, so I'm proposing, my motion is that we. That, this is my motion, we can talk about it.
Sarah, can we go on the very first part of it, just to get one part of this done? That we strike, why don't we vote on the, of striking the language in four point four. Point six, words, uh, between Pine Street and School Street and. Or no, and would stay in there, so it would be, be between Pine Street and School Street, those words would be deleted, so if that's your motion, I would second it.
Yeah, let's, let's limit it to that, that's great suggestion, Gary, thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion?
Laura has her hand up.
Laura.
Sorry, my hand's up on the next one, so, uh, hands down right now, thanks.
Okay, uh, roll call vote on any other comments on this? Okay, roll call vote on, any other comments on this? Roll call vote, Ms. Creighton?
Yes.
Ms. Stelicio?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert?
Absolutely.
Mr. Olney?
Yes.
And Ms. Tenny?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. The motion passes 7-0. Now let's talk about the height.
Just say, making sure we save this.
Okay.
Laura, Kenny.
Okay, so my question was, on the, the existing LCD west of Pine currently allows lab uses, is that correct? We're not changing that. Okay, so if we, if we decide to change the height, we are changing it consistently for lab uses in the west and west of Pine and east of school. Are we changing it for any other type of development? Is this specific to scientific lab?
No.
No.
Not as currently written as I read.
Not as currently written.
And what's the height between the two areas?
I guess it's unspecified. To your point.
So my, my question about the height is that lab buildings in particular have a, have a higher height requirement than most commercial buildings do, given to the HVAC, HVAC equipment and other, you know, other technical constraints of lab buildings. So perhaps it would make sense to allow the height on both sides of the district for scientific lab uses, given that that is where the, the need is for the height relaxation.
Sue, you have a comment?
Yeah, I would just say that while we're contemplating the change for the to move that, that use over to the east side, there is still, there still remains a benefit for any existing allowed use, including business professional offices or other buildings that could benefit from a height increase and therefore a reduction in the footprint.
That's certainly true. All, you know, space, square footage being equal, that is certainly true. Smaller footprint.
But we also, we're also increasing the impervious surface, so it's not as if we're just going up. Those increases are happening on the west side as well.
Correct.
So yeah, so it's, it's an allowed, it's not by right. So it allows us to be, it allows the board to be flexible in its special permit.
May I ask another question? Oh, Christine has a question. I'll go after.
I muted. I guess that's, that was my point. So yes, it's, we're saying that we're going to reduce the footprint, but in the same time, we're expanding the lot coverage from 40 to 60. So we can allow flexibility. I'm not buying it. I feel like you're just saying like, let's make this develop bigger and taller and wider. And this part of the LCD was not discussed at all over the last two years. So I am actually adamantly opposed to changing it west of Pine.
Okay, thanks. Laura, Kenny?
Yeah, my question is around the, the, allowing a certain percentage of impervious surface, given that we're going to be setting requirements through our special permit probably for stormwater management. Do we need to define the impervious surface in this regulation, or can we simply set the requirements, the performance requirement in the special permit and not not change the impervious surface right now? That's just a question about how to best navigate this. So I think our, our goal is to allow responsible development that's suited to the site, accommodates the program requirements and is also environmentally responsible. And we're talking particularly here about stormwater management.
Yes, Sue, do we need to mention impervious?
So if we, if we don't have it, we have we have minimum requirements or maximum requirements in this case, that that rule. So I think by setting it differently, then you can always make it, you can always require a higher standard. But I, I don't think you can, I don't think you can waive it unless, waive that unless you specifically say that the planning board can waive it. So I think it would need some adjusting of language. If you don't want the, if you don't want to delete that section, you may need to add language that says the planning board can waive it. I'm just looking up my phone, too.
I wonder if you could talk about this cover as opposed to impervious or pervious, because there are certainly ways that you can take buildings and parking lots and make them pervious.
The current bylaw says the lot shall not cover.
Structures on the lot.
Structure, the structures on the lot shall not cover.
A statement here. The kind of stuff that you review and discuss, and if need be negotiate with an applicant on a specific project. I support what Laura's saying. Performance standards are really good to have and we have an opportunity to add them to our special permit language for the June town meeting. We can expand a little bit what we're proposing. We should probably. Performance standards in general are great goals. It's a good way to describe rather than mandate things. But, you know, if somebody proposes to cover too much of a lot area and we, we don't think it's a good idea, it's going to be for real reasons. They have trouble recharging water into the soil. And there's no way through science they can mitigate that. And we could say, hey, you can't cover more than 20% of the lot in this area because it just won't work. That's exactly what the special permit review process is about. And I've never seen this town ever drop the ball when it comes to reviewing something the way they're supposed to. So I'm not concerned about these issues at all. And we could, we should take Laura's concerns and add them to what we bring to town meeting in June is my recommendation.
Mary Foley?
I, I don't think we can stipulate something that says, okay, you can do 60% and, and require something stricter. I've never seen that done. I, I don't agree with that statement.
Okay, Sarah?
I just wanted to clarify that this, tonight is not the first time that we've had these height. This is what we've been talking about all along. So this, this, maybe we're, we're better understanding it tonight, but the, these changes throughout the LCD are what we have been discussing. This language, I think, has been with us since January. I also agree with Laura, but I think that I don't want to rely on changes that might happen in June for a bunch of reasons. And I think we are seeing the benefit of performance-based rules that would, we're hopefully working toward and hopefully the people who are still with us are hearing that as well. Forty-nine people are still with us. That's great. So this is, shows the interconnection of what we're doing tonight with the changes that we're trying to push or, or bring to the town meeting in June. But I would encourage us tonight to leave this section as proposed for the April town meeting. If we have fabulous performance-based standards in June, we can always amend this section at that time to make it more consistent with performance-based standards. And thirdly, I believe that the stormwater regulations in the state are largely performance-based. Laura, you would know better than I, but those standards that you're talking about are, are instead, state stormwater rules that the Concoman, we would be reviewing anyway. So I think we're covered on those kinds of things. At least, we may want to make them, make it more stringent. But I think we have a fairly good protection on those BMPs through state statutes.
Okay, thank you. I have Ann Harrison? The comment?
Perhaps I misunderstand, but as written, where do you leave the height restrictions for the LCD between Pine and School?
I agree, we need to figure that out.
Mr. Fetterspiel?
Yes, I was going to make that same comment. You don't want to leave out that middle section on your height. And just, i- if a bylaw says it's a maximum of 40% coverage for building or a maximum of 60% impervious, then you certainly have the right to restrict it to a lower number if through your special permitting process, you have a basis for, for that decision. So you should feel very confident in that. If you, if you want a lower percentage as a maximum, that's, that's fine. But you're not, you're not saying that is what a person gets. It's a special permit and you, you grant up to that amount.
I have an idea we could throw out there on 5.5B for limited commercial district and height. We could consider adding, re-adding the language again, limited to the land area, west of Pine Street and, oops. I was reading it and someone went full screen on. And east of School Street. We could add that language to the height section if someone sees virtue in that.
Well, have, have we decided on both sides?
Yes, we voted on that. Voted on east of School Street. This is limited to
So I propose, I did try, this is an attempt to say the height, this height is basically what we have now in the residential general and the area of limited commercial district between Pine Street and School Street. And then that, this language is what is existing now. So that's not taking anything away or subject to the public review, public notice. And then this would be to limit this height to the area west of Pine Street and east of School Street. And I know Christine is objecting and would like to talk probably about whether we include west of Pine Street, just does that, let's, let's take the first one first. If we limit the height to, in B, does this addition in the A section cover us? Greg is nodding.
Yes.
Sue is nodding.
You want to take these up?
I'll make a motion to make these two changes to this draft.
As written?
As proposed on the
Is there a second before I take comments?
Can I?
Yeah, was it seconded?
I'm just unclear what it is meant.
Sarah, do you want to restate?
The motion, the motion is, as shown on the screen, the height restrictions would be in the residential districts, general districts and the area of the limited commercial districts between Pine Street and School Street. That basically a 35-foot height as, as we currently have in our bylaw. And that B, the limited commercial district in the area west of Pine Street and east of School Street, we would allow a higher pre-construction grade. Up a higher finished grade, sorry.
I second that motion.
So the motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Man, I'll start with Laura Tenny.
Thanks, Ron. I, I'm sensitive to the number of conversations we've had around height tonight. And while I, I do fully agree with the the kind of trade-offs between, you know, a taller building and a, and less land cover. I am wondering if it would make sense to amend this for the purposes of this town meeting to describe scientific lab uses. Because that's really what's been on the table here and then come back later and talk about larger commercial uses. I just want to keep it clarified for people. People raise a number of concerns and I, and I think this is, this is a reason tonight, or what, you know, recent conversations, we've been talking about the need to relax the height for scientific lab uses.
Sounds good. Mary Foley? Oh, did you have your hand?
Hit the wrong button. I think what Laura says makes a lot of sense. And then the other point I would make is I would like to see west of Pine Street up in A instead of giving it down in B. So put it with the other section of the LCD Pine Street and School Street and add west of Pine Street.
So the same language with the same height restrictions. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, just moving
Area descriptions. Yeah.
Just adding the area west of Pine Street up to, under A, where it says residential districts, general districts in the area, the limited commercial district, add west of Pine Street there.
Gary?
I don't really do that. I support what Sue Brown said earlier. The reason that you allow height the reason you allow height is to be able to have a smaller footprint. We would push an applicant to provide us that, to modify their design as such. I think it'd be good to have the latitude. If there's a lab use west of Pine Street, it's because the town wants, the tax revenue wants to allow that land usage. And we need to be reasonable in our regulations. And then when, when we get a project before us, we regulate it. I, I don't think it should be included in. So I disagree with Mary. I don't think we should include it in 5.5A. And I support what Sarah said previously.
Greg?
So it's just, if, if you wanted to just allow the higher height for the research labs, then section A would include all districts. And then your, your B would be restricted to just research labs in the west and eastern ends of the LCD. Again, focus just on research labs. That, I think is what Laura was suggesting.
Thank you, Greg. That clarifies it.
Yeah, that makes sense. That's good. Christina?
I'm muted. Actually, I, I like that idea. I'm really concerned about not having any conversations about the property and the parcels west of Pine. And then all of a sudden changing height and lot coverage and so on and so on for all. This was a proposal for a specific lot. I think we should stick to this specific lot, but if we're not in agreement there, I, I like the idea of just keeping it to labs. I don't like the idea of changing this and opening up any opportunity. We haven't talked about what kind of water, sewer, anything over there, which could be. I just, I'm a little concerned of what we're opening over there without any resources to provide that area.
Okay, so what about a friendly amendment, Sarah, to your proposal of adding it just for lab uses under B?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to just, I can't raise my hand, so when I'm sharing.
Sorry.
So, yeah, that, we certainly can entertain that and, but before we do, I'd like to, to speak to keeping it as I proposed. And that is that a lab, scientific and lab use also has other buildings with it, particularly, you know, office. So, you know, a, I've been in the cell signaling or, and New England bylaw. or am New England Biolabs, for example, facilities, and they are not just laboratories, they are it's a corporate use, it's it's it has offices and and mixed use and conference rooms and storage rooms and all things that are integrated. Um, so I think that the, um, and secondly, for as Gary's first slide pointed out since twenty seventeen or something, there has been discussions about trying to increase our revenue from the LCD, this isn't a new idea. And that encouraging or allowing perhaps a growth of other kinds of uses in this district as even though there are only a few parcels known to us at least that that might have that, um, that this is an appropriate height, it's at fifty-five feet is it's not enormous, it's a it's it's a reasonable height for commercial buildings, so, um. I'd just like to make those points and then we can just maybe take the vote up or down on this and and if it votes down and we would, um, we can certainly modify it to limit it to lab uses as the next step.
Ron.
Christina.
I I do have one quote comment, Sarah, we have not talked about this property west of Pine since two thousand seventeen. We have specifically excluded it because it was pristine, environmentally sound land. These are conversations that have gone on over and over. So this land has specifically been excluded for the last four years. So that statement I beg to differ with, we've concentrated on the area east of school. So this has not been discussed, it's been excluded specifically.
Can we move the question, this is just going in circles now?
Okay, um, Ann Harrison, do you have a quick comment on this?
You have to. Very quick, just in A, the area east of School Street. The area of the limited commercial district east of School Street. Rather than between Pine and School and west of Pine.
Would it be west of School Street? And then this would be.
West of, yes, yes, west of, west of School Street and nothing else.
So I'll, um, to keep, I I'd be willing to, I'd be, you know, strike to to take and make this.
You have to, does a move the question motion on the table? And it is without debate, you have to move the question. And there'll be no more debate.
So Chris only has made a motion to move the question for no more debate, uh, so.
I can retract it for this, just to give this.
I think we're making some progress.
So Chris only has retracted his move the question, so we can continue debate.
So if we have a consensus that except for that that we if we say uh, west of School Street, I'd be willing to take that as a friendly amendment, west of uh, and in the area east of.
Sarah, can we do this really specifically and do one vote at a time? So you're saying five point five A, the title of it would say residential districts, the general district and the area of the limited commercial district west of School Street, is that the answer? That's a specific language that we can vote on, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm gonna delete my comment, okay, so the, yes.
Then I will second it.
Okay.
A motion has been made and.
Just to be clear, this would allow it for all commercial uses, not just labs, so that's the, that's the maybe the next um, discussion, but.
Just, I'm I'm sorry, but you do have a motion on the table.
Yeah, so it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion on A, the area limited commission west of School Street?
Yeah, Ron, you had a previous motion on the table, Sarah's.
And and amend it to and reinsert this motion. I think it was my motion, so.
It was, it was.
So can you restate, can you, can you restate the motion, Sarah, for clarity?
Yes.
It's five.
Five A would be residential districts, general districts and the area of the limited commercial district west of School Street would remain at thirty-five feet. And B, a limited commercial district in the area east of School Street would allow us to go to fifty-five feet.
So there's a motion for both A and B to to read that way, is there a second?
I believe Gary seconded it already.
Well, you restated it, there are second.
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion? I'll take a roll call vote, Ms. Creighton.
Yes.
Ms. Foley.
Yes.
Ms. Delicio.
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert.
Yes.
Mr. Olmey.
Yes.
Ms. Tenney.
Yes.
And the chair votes, yes, the motion carries seven zero. Any further language changes?
Um, I would like to just make sure the board is comfortable with this deleting the remainder of four point six. I don't think we need, I I'm not going to make a motion to do anything other than what is here. But I, it it was something we heard in public comment last meeting that those sections, and I can actually have those pulled up if you just bear with me. So.
Sarah, you've mentioned it three or four times, no one's taking exception to it, why don't we just move forward?
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Brought it up a few times already, but just move forward.
That, do you need us to vote on it, Sarah?
No, I don't think so.
We're comfortable with it, thank you, thank you for, thank you for asking.
Okay, so if there are no other comments on the language, I I vote that we submit this as final language for town warrant, April meeting.
Did we, did, did we have a final decision on the restriction, the uses?
You put lab uses in there?
We did not put that, so the commercial, the height restriction is for all uses in this east of School Street.
I don't know that we, did we resolve that question?
Mary, would you like to make a motion?
No, but I thought we were discussing it.
Yeah, but you voted on something.
What's that?
Sue, did you have your hand up, sorry?
I I'm just gonna say that I think that, um, trying to create zoning to allow a single use um, will be problematic, I think that you'll, um, it's just gonna tie your hands when what you're really trying to do with this is untie them, so. I would not encourage you to say just for that particular use, because there are many uses that could be similarly supported. Um, and then we'd have to go through this exercise all over again. I would just rely on your board to use its special permitting powers wisely.
So with that said, Mary, did you want to raise a motion? Or do we want to just move forward here as written?
Uh, no, not at this time.
Okay, any other language changes, otherwise we can make a motion to submit this?
I'll make a motion to split, submit the LCD changes, article amended March twenty eighth, as shown, is voted tonight to the warrant for the April, for the April twenty fifth town meeting with our recommendation for approval.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded, roll call, any discussion? Uh, roll call vote, Ms. Foley.
Yes.
Ms. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton.
Yes.
Ms. Tenney.
Yes.
Mr. Olmey.
Yes.
And Mr. Gilbert.
Absolutely.
And the chair votes, yes, the language pass, motion passes seven zero. Um, just, um, going forward on this, before we move on to our next topic, do we want to present to this to the FinCom and or the BLS, or do we want to just move it forward? Any thoughts on that?
I think we definitely have to present it to FinCom and ask what what we can provide to them um, for their input on this.
Yeah, I agree. So we'll select. Greg.
Yeah, a little tangential to what you were just talking about, but I think it'd be very helpful for your minutes to reflect the deliberation or conversations that you've had as to why you're limiting it to just the east, the most eastern section of the LCD. And it doesn't need to be extensive, but I think I heard people say that uh, the unique environmental conditions and topography, et cetera, um, warrant this change to be restricted to the far eastern section of the LCD. I think it'd be helpful to have that reflected in your minutes. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but that's what I heard.
Okay. So noted. Um, so we'll get a team together to present to the FinCom. Thank you. Okay. That's done, the next thing, any update from Sarah or Chris on the zoning bylaw changes? You said to review and finalize section four, I don't know if we, the hours late, I don't know if we want to do that tonight?
Um, there is.
If you have.
I, um, so let me just give you a quick update. Um, I looked at the calendar for the public, the town meeting is June eleventh and working back from that. I think we're going to be looking at a public hearing on mid-May, which means that we have an April nineteenth deadline for public notice or perhaps April twenty-sixth. That said, I think that means we have to have another workshop. I know we all, I think that that's easier than trying to make changes to zoning at nine thirty at night. Um, so my recommendation is that we meet next Monday for zoning changes. Um, that, so so that if if there's no disagreement, then that would be the plan. And then I I would suggest, um, we that tonight's meeting had some very good input that we should keep in mind. Um, but we'll be looking at section four and trying to finalize that. Um, Chris and I took another stab at the senior housing based on the comments last week. And, um, I think we came up with some good additions to that. Um, so we'll try to get through that next time. And then, um, Chris and Laura have spent quite a bit of time talking about section six, so I'm hoping we can delve into that as a, we talked about that last time, so hopefully we can sort of introduce that. And, um, lastly, um, we will talk about the sections that should be moved to the general bylaws. We've talked about them in vague terms, but I'll produce, I'll put together a list and you want you to think about those, I think right now they're junk cars, curb cuts, um, stormwater potentially. And some of the sections that, when we went and looked at section four about contractors' yards and a few other things, we realized that they appropriately belong as amendments to general bylaws. So they apply across, um, not just when you're getting a building permit, but, um, across the town all the time. Um, so, um, and so that's where we are with that, and, um, I think Sarah Melish has commented on.
Okay, but you, so just to be clear, you're calling for a meeting on April fourth at six thirty?
Yes, and specifically.
Also, I want to add that, um, I've written a little bit about the red, a little memo about the residential cluster comparing what's in the current zoning now with what is being proposed. And I I think it'll help clarify some of Mary's questions, which, uh, some of them turned out to be pretty legitimate when I got into it, so. I'm hoping this will help further the discussion. The other thing is I would like to ask that Mark Bobrowski attend that meeting, I think he, some of these items that we're gonna be talking about may require his input, and I'd like to have him there if possible.
Sarah, can I ask a question?
Sarah, go ahead. I mean, go ahead.
Great, um, two things, um, could we could, when bylaws are changed, could they be track changed? I know you've said you've changed some bylaws, but I'm not seeing any track changes on them, so I'm not sure what's been changing. And then my second question is if we're gonna meet on Monday and or going forward, can we know by Thursday what we're gonna be discussing on on Monday? Going away on the weekend, I try to pull everything down by by Friday, Thursday, Friday, and then there's a lot of changes that happen seemingly over the weekend on on Sunday.
Right, I I appreciate that, my problem is I work on out on the weekend, so, um, the other, also, the one other suggestion would be to meet on a different night. On Wednesday or something, it's just that it's, um, I think right now for next Monday, we're in pretty good shape, um, because I put them up there for tonight. So, um, I think we can meet that goal for next Monday, but I can't guarantee it for, and I appreciate the the challenge, um, but I think hopefully, um, let me back up a second, um, hopefully everybody saw my memo, I, as per our discussion last time, I reorganized um, this section of our SharePoint to have an archive section, everything that's gone before. And then, um, a thing called Articles, and I have a subfolder for each of the topics that we've been discussing so that we can keep everything organized by topic, hopefully that's easier to follow. Um, and I think if you can review senior housing, which is there, I can send another memo, um, tomorrow. Section four. Um, Chris will have a memo for the residential cluster, and I will be able to get some general bylaw stuff up. And if people have other issue, the section six, I'm not sure that will be ready before Thursday, I can't speak to that. And floodplain, if somebody wants to advance that, for sure, that's, I I I don't have the bandwidth to do that one.
So I sent you comments on that, um.
Can you put them in the folder? Put them in the.
Point about track changes, for some of the sections, it makes sense to show the track changes. But for section six, for example, i- if you were to look at that as a track change, it would be just a hodgepodge of incomprehensible deletions and additions. And you wouldn't really be able to figure out what's existing, what's being changed. So we can probably try to do it by section, and maybe if you'd like to take that on and take the proposed ones and compare to the, oh, that would be, that would be great, that's something that would be very helpful to us.
Well, I think.
A lot of work without much benefit for us.
Well, I guess what I'm specifically addressing now is, um, Sarah had commented that you guys made changes to the senior housing bylaw from comments that we've made. And I just want to see what was changed from what we discussed, you know, a week ago.
I don't think we made any, I don't think we touched.
Yeah, we did, we added, um, some, uh, I I I can compare them, but, um, we added some limits on size. We added, um, some, uh, exterior, we basically took the comments that we heard last time that the kitchen and the bedroom had to be on the same level. Um, you know, the 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 idea that it's really one level living, that kind of thing. So, um, going for, we can try to do that, um, it's, I think that one is pretty simple review, but, um, where I think by this new organization should help us to be able to compare prior versions and, um, future versions.
I see three people have their hand raised, Greg, I just wanted to ask if you could stay on, I I did want to talk a little bit to the board about this forty A letter that's going out. Just stay on, find out where that stands, okay, I'll just take, Sarah, Melish, you had your hand raised.
Uh, yeah, I'm I'm.
Oh, yeah, I'm muted, right? Okay. So I just wanted to let the board know that as soon as that public hearing is held, anything listed in the public hearing puts us on hold, even if you change it later. And our deadline for submitting applications for June is May 16. So the timing of that public hearing would be important to us whether it's before, after May 16th, because if it's before May 16th, it will impact all of our applications for June. If it's after May 16th, then it will impact our applications for July, and I'm hoping that we will receive a dummy summary of what's being changed, because we're going to have to look at every single application submitted to see whether it's impacted by any potential changes. Thank you.
Christina.
So I guess I wanted to raise a concern about going forward with the Monday workshops. I think when early on when we tried to, we tried to really not coincide with the Board of Selectmen. I know last time we did this, there was, I think, center was at the same evening. So going forward, I would really prefer to do it on another night besides Monday and not. If it doesn't conflict with the Board of Selectmen, I'm fine with it, but I would prefer not to conflict with the BLS. Thank you.
Okay, and Laura, Jenny.
I'm just looking for a little direction, Sarah, on when are we trying to get all these before? Are we trying to get them to the June meeting? Because it's a lot to discuss at next week's hearing. I'm not going to commit, I can't commit to having section six done by Thursday. I've got to write the cornerstone church decision. And I'm feeling like we just have a lot on our plates right now. So what should we be, which we prioritize?
If we can't get section six talked about next month, next Monday, I think that's reasonable. Probably wouldn't get to it anyway.
Yeah.
Let's focus on section four, senior housing and the residential cluster and the general bylaw sections. That's, that's a lot. And I think.
These all go to June town meeting and we're kind of working our way, or some could be November or what's.
I think we, that's that, yeah. I think our current working assumption is that we're moving toward those that we've been talking about for June to the extent we can get them done.
Thank you.
We have too much work. We can do it all. Although miracles happen. Sue Brown, sorry.
I just wanted to, do you want me to invite Mr. Bobrowski to Monday's workshop with us?
With the board.
Okay. Thank you.
So we are settled on the fourth for now, and then Christina, do you have a comment?
Was curious, I was looking back at last week's meeting. We pushed off ADUs. Are we rescheduling that till when?
It's a good point.
I can say something about that, Sarah.
Yeah, you got her ready. Are you ready to get stuff to us by Thursday?
We have a new draft. The zoning study group, the housing study group discussed on Saturday, revised draft. And I can send it to you tomorrow, put it on SharePoint tomorrow. We can talk about it when there's time. Whichever meeting you want to schedule it into. We should talk about it and go through it.
Maybe we can at least have a conversation about it and not try to finalize it. I guess. Good. Thank you, Christine. Good idea. So not section six, but ADUs. I'll send a memo to you guys tonight.
Okay. Thank you. So late, was it maybe over the weekend, Greg? You had sent me a draft letter that the Board of Selectmen were planning to send on to the state on this forty A initiative. And asked about the board, maybe reading it and signing on. Or so I, I sent it out to the board for them to review. And then late today, or maybe this morning, I got comments from John Round, who made some comments to the letter. So could you just explain what you might be looking for from the board? And which one is, is the one, is the John Round one, the correct one? And where that stands?
So at the last session that we had on the MBTA law, the forum, the board agreed to consider, the Board of Selectmen agreed to consider writing a letter to the state in time for their comment period, which ends at the end of this week. And so the board is meeting tomorrow and will be considering doing that. They have a draft letter as indicated. And I requested comments back to me. And John was the only one to respond with the written comments. Couple of other folks had had a couple of oral comments to me, but in any case, the, the draft is pretty much as, as John had had made recommendations. That'll be shared with with everyone tomorrow. It's also been on the website. And so that's a conversation that the Selectmen will be having at the meeting. They have a meeting tomorrow morning at eight thirty to finalize the warrant. Based on your, your revisions tonight, on the, on the zoning, and they'll finalize the rest of the warrant. And then they'll also take up this question of the comment letter. And if if the planning board wanted to use the same letter, that's fine. If you have us make separate comments or if, or if you want to do that tonight, or if you want to have a special meeting before the deadline of the thirty first year, you're obviously welcome to do that as well. But if you want to co-sign this letter, the Selectmen would welcome that.
So I'll take comments from the board on this proposal to sign, do our own, or do nothing, or whatever. Any comments on that as the deadline is fast approaching, unfortunately? Laura.
Thanks, Ron. Yeah, I had some comments. I, I thought that it was a well-written letter. I actually liked it better before the John Round comments, because he took one clause out that I thought was important, which was stating the support for a diversity of housing, which has been identified in the master plan. I did. I had some proposed thoughts about changes, which help our striking of a sort of, you know, more neutral ground. Maybe I could just talk them through quickly rather than getting into wordsmithing here. The, the middle paragraph, while, while it recognizes the impact of climate change, I think it's a little too heavy-handed on you know, dismissing transit-oriented development. I, we have, we have climate realities to face within our train line, but I don't want, I think we should not come out too strongly as saying, you know, transit already, development should be rethought, but but we could say that transit-oriented development is, is actually one important, it's one important response to addressing climate change, because it reduces emissions. So if we were to, and I won't, you know, I'm happy to forward edits. But I think there are a few things that we could do that maybe would address that concern of, you know, potential flooding right around the train line. One of the more important ones being under the page two, amending the guidelines as follows. Perhaps expanding the radius to a mile or a mile and a half from the train station to allow more suitable uplands to be developed that are, could be zoned for multifamily housing while still creating walkable transit-oriented neighborhoods with good access to transit. Much of our town and those of us who live beyond a half mile consider ourselves as having easy access to transit. I know I do, and I walk to it all the time. And you could say that, you know, the whole village area is transit accessible. And then allowing, another point, allowing existing multifamily housing units to be counted, whether or not they occur in the underlying by right, by right zones or not. I think that was some of the area that people were asking for more clarity on. And lastly, an additional comment, expanding and extending access to state-funded planning support in the form of grants and consulting services geared specifically to small towns or rural areas that may be less likely to receive awards from the complete neighborhood program, which appears to be quite limited, only six, six communities a year. It's capped. It only goes for a couple of years, and it seems to be more oriented towards communities with your typical urban issues. So I did make some edits. I'm happy to send them to Greg. I'm happy to have discussion, but those were some of the things that I, that jumped out at me. And otherwise, I thought it was a letter that made several good points, and I would be open to signing with some of those changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Mary Foley?
I have a different take on the letter. I thought it was actually weak in the sense of not pointing out some of our real concerns as a community, the financial impacts with schools and public services, water, sewer, infrastructure, all that. Addressing the point that this really as written does not, does nothing for our affordable housing needs. It doesn't talk about the impact to our historic district and how we would handle that. I I wish as a board, we had spent time on this and, and were able to draft from a planning board's view of our concerns for the community. I would not be so inclined to put, to sign this. Those are my thoughts.
Any other thoughts from the board on this, on, on proceeding with this or not proceeding or sending in comments individually to the board? Since they're considering it when tomorrow, Greg?
Yes.
Christina.
I've actually already sent individual comments. I concur with several of Mary's points. I think we've waited till the last minute, trying to organize our thoughts by tomorrow morning for the BLS. I think maybe send individual names. I do not want to write this letter as written. Do you want individual names? Do you want that consensus of the board? I guess, what are you looking for, Ron?
Just if we would say, sign it as, as a endorsement with the Board of Selectmen, the planning board, you know. But if we want to send in comments individually, I'd be open to that also. So it sounds like the board does not want to sign it globally. So maybe we send in individual comments before their meeting tomorrow and see if they get adopted. Would that be acceptable to the board? Sarah?
I'm, I'm going to make a motion that we, that the planning board sign on to the Board of Selectmen's letter and that we indicate our vote. You know, planning board with five, or you know, four votes for and three votes against has, you know, voted to approve, to support this letter, something to that effect. We can indicate our vote if that way the member, any members who don't want to endorse the letters will at least have the fact that it's a, not, not perhaps in a unanimous vote reflected. So I'll motion, I move that we vote to add the Manchester Planning Board to name to the letter that the Board of Selectmen is also signing with an indication of our vote of number of votes, yea and nay.
There's a motion on the floor to endorse the Board of Selectmen letter. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, any discussion?
I think we should add Laura's comments to it. To our, to our vote to the Board of Selectmen. And ask them to consider those, those comments.
I'm going to ask the, suggest that my motion be include that we convey Laura's comments and defer to the Board of Selectmen for their good judgment.
So I would, I would point out that you're asking for a vote on something that you don't know what the final letter is even saying.
True.
That's true, but I think that the Board of Selectmen has given it a lot of consideration. And Greg has been talking to others, other town managers. And I have, I, my motion indicates my confidence that they will draft a good letter, and I think it's important that the town send a letter. And I think it's important that the planning board demonstrate that we work with the Board of Selectmen and trust each other to do our best within the limits of being volunteers and having differences of opinions.
So as, as a point of clarification, are you asking for people to send in comments only if they vote yes on this? Or is it anybody sends in comments?
I think anybody can send any comments they want as individuals.
So Greg, do you think that the, the letter will change much in substance from what's written, what we're seeing?
I'm not anticipating that. It's you know, it'll be, it'll be a challenge to incorporate, you know, seven, seven more sets of comments. If that's, if that's what happens. That doesn't mean that it's not, that it's impossible, but it'll, writing, writing with the, with twelve authors is, is a challenge.
I hear you. Okay, so there's a motion, and it's been seconded to, and amended to include comments from the board in addition and to support the Selectmen's letter by by vote. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll take a roll call vote, Ms. Creighton.
We didn't hear you, Sarah.
Yes.
Ms. Delicio.
No.
Ms. Foley.
No.
Mr. Gilbert.
Yes.
Mr. Alny.
Yes.
Ms. Tenny.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So the planning board votes five to two to endorse the letter that the Selectmen are sending to the state on the forty A. So Greg, you can mention that at the meeting tomorrow.
Yes, yeah. And if you're able to give me your comments this evening, that would be wonderful.
I can do that. I mean, I can give you the comments I made on the one. It's copy everyone. Sure.
Okay, can't find my agenda now. Sheesh, so much stuff open. So can somebody tell me what's next on the agenda?
Subcommittee and liaison reports.
Any subcommittee and liaison reports? I will mention that the task, the water task force is having a tour of the DPW facilities on the thirtieth. That would be the Lincoln Street Well and the Water Treatment Plant. Any other comments? Mary, anything from the FinCom? I believe that
No.
Nothing. Okay, the minutes. I'm in the blind here. Here we go. Minutes of two eight, two fourteen and two twenty eight. Sharon, which ones were done? Are they all done?
Late from two fourteen.
The two eight and two fourteen were posted to our site, Sarah, late today, correct? So I don't know if anyone had a chance to read them.
No, I put them in before that. They were in there on Thursday.
I, I'm, well, they were, they were in a shared directly, they were not in our meeting packet. So I moved them. So I moved them when I noticed that around noon time today. So Sharon, we can talk about where they were, but they were not in our packet. So, um, nonetheless, um, I have made some, uh, I don't know if people have had time to look at them. I'm worried that we're very far behind. Um, the, um, I did make some comments on, uh, two eight, hopefully they're in there.
You, I already made those changes. You have more changes?
Oh, well, uh, no, so I made changes, um, but I haven't had a chance now to see the amended version.
The amended version is what's there.
Okay, but I.
Well, if, if you haven't had a chance to look at them, uh, I know we're behind. Greg, I have a question. What about the Gail Hunter minutes? Are they going to ever get posted?
Yes.
They are posted?
Yes, they are.
So we're up to date on all our minutes?
Through 12, 13.
No minutes posted this year.
This, yeah, there seems to be an issue with, you know, the, the minute postings.
Sorry, let me follow.
Could you? Including, including stuff from October, November. I, 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 I don't know if they're on or not. Last time I looked, they weren't up.
I gave the minutes, Gail's minutes from October and November to the clerk's office to put up. I will check with them tomorrow to find out. Yes.
Thank you.
Um.
All right, go ahead, Sarah.
I, I, so just to clarify, I believe, um, Gail, I mean, um, Sharon is referring to my, I sent her a handwritten notes on February 8th and I believe those were incorporated. So, um, uh, that's, that's what we're talking about. I have other minute, other, other comments on the 14th that are different story. So I'm going to move to, um, accept the minutes of February 8th as, um, presented. Okay.
No, I have a, I have a correction. I have to say, I only read through them quickly. I looked at six AM, they were not in the folder. I looked at 5:00 PM, they were in the folder, so I glanced at them. But I do want to make one correction for clarity on page two, where it says, um, second paragraph, impervious surface was discussed with LCD. Ms. Tenny suggested not using pervious surface. I don't, that, I.
That was true, actually. We took out pervious surface as a pervy.
As a definition, yeah.
Definition, right.
Yes, I'm concerned that someone would read this and say that I'm suggesting that we should only use impervious surface in the LCD. I don't think it's clear. So can we please clarify that I said we don't require the impervious, the pervious surface definition? Thank you.
Actually, I did have another, uh, change, which was also on page two. You have, uh, a reference to B4 and it's, it was that numbering that I had that was PB4. So I will get you the, we want the topic. Uh, I can't, I can't, I can find it in a minute.
Sarah, there's nothing in here that says we're talking about definitions, so it's, yeah, it's confusing what the topic is.
Well, it was very confusing listening to all of you about the definitions, trying to figure out what definitions we were talking about.
I'm sure it was. I wonder if, um, maybe just a higher level, you know, trying to be a, you know, recording every.
I did note, I did note one thing in those minutes that Mary Foley had attended twice.
That's good.
As of Monday night, Gail Hunt is doing the minutes from now on.
So how's that going to work, Greg? So, um, she's just doing the minutes?
Right, she'll focus on, on that aspect.
And Sharon will still be doing the postings and the, um,
Yes.
Correct, correct.
The me, the meeting packets?
Yes.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Ron, I'm sorry, my connection just broke out. Could you repeat what just happened?
Sharon is, uh, removing herself from the task of doing minutes and Gail Hunter will be doing our minutes starting Monday. But, uh, Sharon will still be our, our day-to-day contact for process-type things. Is that, that's the way I understand it?
Yes.
Okay, so I have three changes to, um,
Okay, can you just email them to me?
We need to vote them.
Yeah.
I didn't read them.
I have three, uh, three changes to the posted, I mean, that's there, um, in addition to Laura's, um, comment about.
This on February 8th?
February 8th, insert a heading definitions and I, uh, before the discussion of the definitions. The second thing is the whole contractors and landscapers yard, just change it to construct contractor and landscape yard were discussed. And third, um, change B4 to, it was my abbreviation, to, um, accessory dwelling units.
Ron, can we just approve these at the next meeting? Might, might get easier.
So you're moving to approve them at the next meeting? Are we, are we close to doing the February 8th ones? Or do people want time to look at them? I mean, we can get that off the plate if Sarah's gone through them.
I haven't looked at them. I'm going to abstain, so.
Yeah, I, I couldn't find them. I, I haven't looked at them.
Let's do them all next meeting. Maybe we can do them on the, on the fourth.
Yep.
It's not that far away. Okay.
And the, the, can I just, I'm sorry to beat this one, but on the 14th, there's an important, um, I've put comments in them, um, we did not vote that, uh, curb cut on the, um, Lincoln Ave on the 14th. We deferred and we voted at the next meeting. So I've added some comments to that one as well, a number of comments.
Okay, thanks. We'll do that on the fourth. We'll vote those. Hopefully the, the third set will be ready. Um, just a comment to the board, um, the Selectmen are now, um, thinking about or moving to hybrid meetings, which involves, um, some software that's been placed in by Kate Dan TV into the meeting room. So to make a, a long story short, um, at some point, we will be meeting again in Town Hall as this COVID seems to be subsiding. We can meet anytime. I know Sarah's group, uh, ZBA, they want to get back to meeting in person. I'm more of not getting together until at least after a town meeting. But the, um, the idea of it is we have to go down there at, at least for one day for some training. That would be all of us. I mean, if you can't make it, you can't make it, but it'll be mostly training on how to, uh, you know, interact with this new equipment, how the audience will be interacting. So there'll be an audience from home and then we'll be live in the town meeting room. So it's a, quite a complicated, uh, setup there, at least. Jeff and Sarah Melish and I went down for an initial, uh, look at it. It was a little bit of a complication, uh, a little bit complicated to me anyway. But, um, just want to make you aware of that. Now Sue Kraft was asking about next week during the day and I asked, I pushed back and said, can we do it more in the evening? I think that's better for everyone. So she, I haven't heard back, but I, I'm just, uh, trying to get some times, uh, for us to meet down in Town Hall. So I just wanted to make everyone aware of that. But again, I'm not pushing for us to meet. Uh, I think we've got a lot on our plate. I think this is working well. And I think until we get, uh, our stuff set for annual town meeting this April, I think we'll still meet remotely in Zoom. At least that's my feeling. So I just wanted to, uh, mention that to the board. Okay, um, thank you all for coming. I'll take a motion to adjourn. There's nothing else. Okay, motion removed and seconded, um, Ms. Ms. Creighton?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. Delicio?
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Ms. They're only?
Yes.
Ms. Tenny?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Okay, see you next week. Thanks.
Good night.
Night.
Thank you all.